Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Gates County Board of Commissioners's regular scheduled meeting. My name is Emily Truman. I serve as the 2025 Board Chair. I'm joined by Commissioner Nathan Berryman, Vice Chair Jonathan Craddock, Commissioner Brian Roundtree, Commissioner Dave Forsyth, County Manager Scott Sauer, County Attorney Pitt Godwin, and Clerk to the Board Renee Draper. At this time, Commissioner Roundtree is going to provide the invocation and lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you, Lord, for letting us once again symbol together as a board to conduct county business. Lord, we ask that you would give us wisdom as you give to us liberally. Give us understanding, knowledge, order our steps, give us direction as we make decisions on behalf of our constituents. Help us, Lord, to support all departments under our jurisdiction and help us, Lord, to do the positive things and the things that would be necessary to provide resources for our constituents and citizens of Gates County. We ask of all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Roundtree. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? I do have one where we had one of our special presentations for tonight. Brian Bug asked to be removed. That's item C. Otherwise, I have none to present.
I have one correction to the meeting minutes for the regular meeting on September 19th.
Let the now or the consent agenda? No, we consent agenda. We're just approving the agenda right now. Okay, so if there are no other additions or deletions, we'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Madam Chair, motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, so we have a first and second. By show of hands, all in favor. All right, that is unanimous, so it is passed as is. All right, moving down to the consent agenda. Are there any amendments or clarifications?
As noted, yep, the regular meeting minutes for September 19th on page eight of 12. I'd say these were very thorough, and I appreciate the thoroughness with which they're done. I would ask that at the top of the page of eight of 12, this is under Commissioner Forsyth's comments, I would add that he also asked if other counties had approved as a question, and then in the response of the next individual, his response was yes.
I'm just giving the clerk a moment to get that noted. Okay, all right. Are there any other amendments for the consent agenda? If not, we'll ask to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, all in favor? And that is unanimous, so we will move forward with our special presentations. So first, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners each year has a presidential initiative, and for this last past president's initiative, he had a heroic hands initiative, and it was celebrating public service, recognizing North Carolina local government employees. And he himself had been a retired trooper, and so he just kind of had a heart for those that served the community. And as the commissioners were considering who to nominate for this, Commissioner Forsyth, I believe it was at the District One meeting, had put forth a name for Ms. Barbara Austin. And as someone who has a middle schooler now, I can say that those that work with middle school students are very, very special people, especially in the counselor role. And Ms. Austin has, just going to kind of read what we have here as an insert, and if you want to come up to the podium for a moment, and I'll read this, and then we have something for you. So Barbara Austin has been with Gates County for nine years. She has dedicated years to supporting youth going above and beyond for students, their parents, and staff. She regularly checks on students' health during absences, offers mental health support, coaches various activities, and provides ongoing encouragement. Barbara is a safe and steady present for middle schoolers amid daily challenges, a fact that does not go unnoticed. Former students continue to praise her unmatched spirit, compassionate heart, and lasting impact. Many express how fortunate the county is to have her. Barbara's unwavering dedication and kindness have made a meaningful difference in the lives of countless young people, staff, and families. We are grateful for the opportunity to recognize her commitment in service. So first off, thank you, Ms. Austin.
That's very kind.
And for her. So much of what we do up here is the busy work pushing through, but when we have something to recognize, the meaning, it means a lot. And I can say I've personally sat through a Bible study with Ms. Austin and could see her heart for her youth through that. So we will move on to the next presentation. At this time, we have Angel White and Ralph Halliwell. We can invite them to the podium to discuss the PCG solid waste convenience centers.
I think Ralph's going to stay in the amen pew.
Oh, he opted out, huh?
He did join us tonight, along with David Low, our assistant manager, as well. All right, so when Mr. Sauer asked me to join y'all and answer some questions, I didn't quite expect that I would be doing a presentation, but then when I got the email, I kind of had a different idea that I was supposed to bring a presentation, so.
We appreciate your effort.
So we do have a little bit of a presentation here tonight. I'll help if I get my glasses. All right, so. So PCG oversees the convenience centers. ARHS operates convenience centers on behalf of Perqammon's, Chawan, and Gates Counties. So there are 13 convenience centers. Gates has four of those, Chawan has four, Perqammon's has five. Along with that, we do have four full-time staff. That includes the landfill manager, myself, assistant manager David Low, machine operator, and a process and assistant. David Low, the assistant manager for PCG, is also the supervisor for the landfill attendants in Gates County, and he assists with overseeing all of our operations as well. For the PCG convenience centers, they're operated according to our solid waste ordinances for the state, as well as with the county ordinances and the federal government laws and rules. Gates County ordinance has sections that were passed in 1993, 2005, and 2008. I think you were all provided a copy of that in your packets. No? Okay, all right. You can find it on your county website. Okay. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yes, ma'am. All right. And so the local county ordinances for Perqammon's, Chawan, and Gates can vary widely. For example, Gates states on one section of theirs, there's no more than one standard pickup truck load limit per person per day for solid waste in the sites. Out of the three counties, Gates is the only county that has that. These varying ordinances and rules can be confusing for our employees, because in order to make sure that we have all of our sites open throughout the three counties, sometimes we have to pull employees from one county to another if we've got employees out for long-term absences. And so when an employee comes from Perqammon's to work over on a Gate site, they don't enforce that rule because it's not the same in the county that they originally work in. So all ordinances must be in line with the state rules in order to help reduce confusion. We've also proposed creating one aligned solid waste ordinances for the three counties that we serve. Additionally, we did present to the three county managers, as well as our PCG board, the idea of how to reduce unauthorized and unintended use of the convenience centers, which may be contributing to your rise in disposal cost. We sent that to them in June, and we're waiting on feedback from the counties on how to proceed Just looking at some current trends, it does show that even though there was kind of a bump in population around 2010 or so, the population in Gates County has been declining slowly over the recent years. And although we didn't have the disposal data for 2000, the data from 2014 to 2024 shows that although the population has decreased, there has been a marked increase in the tons that we manage at PCG. And you're not alone in that. The same thing has happened in Chawan and Perqammon's, too. In Gates, this was approximately 60% increase in tons managed per person. During this time period, the cost per ton managed only increased about $20 per ton, so that's a 17 and a half percent increase over a 10-year period. I don't think that's bad, considering how much everything else has increased in cost over that same 10-year period. And if you want to look at the raw data currently, well, 2024, which is the last report, it was about .6725 tons per person, and the U.S. average, that's about .8 to .9 tons per person annually. So we're not doing bad, but it's just, you know, the costs are rising because how much we're having to manage per person is rising as well. With our PCG convenience centers, another thing to consider is prior to 2021, they were not specifically included in the North Carolina DEQ rules. When DEQ revised their 15A subchapter 13 rules in 2021, they included our convenience centers for the first time, calling them collection centers. We do currently use these rules across the three counties to guide convenience center operations, in addition to your own county rules. So looking at the definitions from North Carolina DEQ, a collection center is a collection point for the temporary storage of individual residential households who choose to transport solid waste generated on their own property to a facility owned or operated by a local government, rather than directly to a permitted solid waste management facility. These are also called convenience centers and drop-off centers. These are not transfer stations. A collection center shall operate in accordance with Rule 0208A of the subchapter. So Rule 0208A states that a collection centers are not required to be permitted if they comply with these rules. So this is why we don't have to get permits for our convenience sites. So these rules do include that they shall not receive solid waste generated from non-residential activities or by commercial waste collection services. Facilities that receive such waste shall comply with the rules for transfer stations in Section 0400. So per DEQ rules, collection centers are for residential use only, and this is the only way that they fall under the exemption for our permitting. So if we allow non-residential or commercial use, then the centers will fall under the 400 rules and be subject to the same rules and regulations as our transfer station that we operate in Belvedere. So this slide does include more information specific to the rule about convenience centers. The information under the second bullet does list several items that are not allowed to be accepted, in addition to items that are listed in solid waste rules that are banned from landfilling, such as tires, liquids, hazardous materials. One item that we see a lot of this time of year is animal carcasses. They're not allowed to be dumped into our convenience sites. They can bring them to the transfer station, though. These items may require handling in special ways or special disposal options. That's why they have to bring them to the landfill in Belvedere. So like fluorescent light bulbs, they do, even the newer ones still have a small amount of mercury in them, so we have to recycle them. This just states that DE and Q inspectors can enter your convenience sites and inspect them for compliance with our rules. And I believe at the last meeting that you had, there was some discussion about our Reducosite, and there wanted, somebody wanted, well, the board was asking about an additional container. And I know Mr. Sauer had asked me about an additional container there as well. And I think that the image up here pretty closely aligns with the one that was displayed at your last meeting. It does show a mostly empty site, and although there is technically room to sit another container inside of this site, when Mr. Sauer asked me, I think my response was that logistically there really is not much more room to put another container at that site. And the reason being is that when you place containers, you have to plan for how the containers will be moved, as well as how people and vehicles will move around the containers as well. So if you look at the display, the blue boxes show where containers were placed already, in addition to the containers that are there. So when we put in containers for container movement, when they change out containers, that's where they go. So like when they're changing out a compactor, the compactor just doesn't sit where it currently is. It sits on both sides of the compactor as they move it. Same thing with the recycle. The yellow boxes indicate where the truck would be working when it's moving those containers, picking them up, placing them down, as well as you have to leave room for the oil truck when it comes to empty your oil containers and the truck servicing Port of John. And then you also have to consider you may have one or two Dixie trucks in there at one time servicing the site, as well as customer movement, safety as well.
You want us to hold questions to the end?
This is the end, really.
Well, I'm just wondering if the size of this is the same as the Core Peak location, because the orientation of the roll-offs to the western side, or what I take is if this is north-south, probably just the opposite south-north, but this direction over here, you have the roll-off oriented along this route at the Core Peak location. Y'all have two there. You have one located oriented east-to-west, and it does stick out a little bit, but the big yellow box where you have the truck shown is an open area that, sure, while you're changing out a compactor, that area might be limited, but normal operation. I've never been in decades to the Core Peak site where the compactor trucks actually been there removing one, and only once when a roll-off was. So the few times where there might be some interaction seems relatively small, if this site is roughly the same size as the Core Peak.
I don't know if it's the same size. David, do you know if this is the same size as Sunbury Site?
No, Core Peak. Oh, Sunbury, I'm sorry, yeah, Sunbury, excuse me.
They're close. Here's Core Peak. I think they're changed.
See, Sunbury has two, they're a much busier site, and they have two trash compactors, and they only have, it's a different configuration as well.
It looks pretty similar.
So looking at this, the bottom-left corner there looks fairly accessible. Would that not be an option for a?
If you put one in the bottom-left corner, that would be a logistical question. I don't think that you can put one there because of them driving up. If you put one, you can't put one facing this way because they can't access the two of them together. You also have to think about your customers, being able to access the can and fully use the can. If you put the cans too close together or too tight against the fence, then your customers are only able to fill half of the can, so you're hauling half-full cans. It's not a good value for your money.
Yeah, I think the bigger question, the root question that we really have is, our thought was, the reason why we're thinking about adding a second one, or could we add a second one, was directly because some of the poultry farmers in the area on that side of the county was like, hey, for us to take and travel all the way to the transfer site, it's a long ways. Can we work something out? And so that's why we asked, because could there be a second one specifically designated for something like that? But if you already have bulk containers there, can't they just?
Well, I think if you back up and not answer your question, but once you get, and I've had these same thoughts, but when she put that up there in front of me.
I went to the same place.
Ah, moment. It was, it's right there, the regulatory, if you put animal waste, you go with the different regulations.
Well, if you're collecting anything that's non-residential at this site, you're going to have to permit it as a transfer station. You're going to have to add leachate collection, and you're going to have to permit it, just like, they're going to have to follow the rules just like our transfer station.
So at the end of the day, that is the real reason why we really can't.
It's not space, it's because of the rules.
I don't think it's size at all, to be honest. I think if it becomes a permitting and industrial use location, then that's the real reason. Because I'm sorry, even what you're showing me, I used to have a garbage business, I've drove roll-ups, have a CDL, done that one of my many past jobs, and you could fit a roll-off in there. You can turn those things 90 degrees, and the ones in Core Peak, they back them up against the back of the fence, the one that's metals, and the one that's the wood waste. And many a time, I backed them every side of it and had to toss it over to the side because the back door wasn't accessible.
Can and should are probably two different things. I just, you know, the one that you're referring to in Core Peak, the wood waste is not always full, because when you have it all the way in the corner, it's difficult for your average consumer to get their stuff in there. Yeah, and the same thing with the metal. We work really hard. We have, you have a really good driver that will pull the cans forward, and we keep the metal in that one spot in that site. You'll notice it's always over there, one off from the recycle, pulled forward further so that the back door can be open on that one. You can't do that with the other bulk containers at the Core Peak or Sunbury Site, because if you do, they cannot access the two compactors there. It's easier to do because the recycle is in front of your oil containers, and they sit further back. They're not in front of it where the truck can't get to the recycle. But if you had a 30-yard in front of your recycle compactor, they would not have room to access it.
We just have to agree, disagree.
All right. So basically, it's not a space issue regardless, it's because of the rule it would have to be made a transfer station.
Yeah, so that's the answer to our question.
Yeah, because it becomes a regulatory issue, yeah.
Any other questions regarding operations?
Yes, actually, I appreciate the fact that you pointed out the part about fluorescent light bulbs.
Yes.
Because personally, I've had that issue before, didn't know what to do with them when they told me I couldn't unload them there.
We take anything that, anything that they do not take at the, well, anything that most household consumers have that we do not take at the transfer, at the convenience sites, we take at the transfer station for free from the community.
We probably just need to socialize that. Same thing with the dead animals. Everybody's had a dog that got hit, or a chicken that died, or something. So that's just, maybe we need to socialize that a little better to our public information officer, maybe make that clear, because I've gone there before, I've asked the workers, and I expect them to know every single rule of every sort. Retirees sometimes work in there, very pleasant people, nice, but when I've asked them, well, if I can't get over here, where do I get rid of it? And they don't know.
We try to emphasize that with them. We do train-ins multiple times a year with them and try to remind them to tell people when you say that you can't leave it here to provide them that alternative, because we don't want it to end up down the road.
Right, appreciate that very much.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I do have a question. So I heard you mentioning about trying to get all the sites kind of on the same schedule. What are the other county's schedules as far as?
Not schedule, on the same solid waste ordinance. So that the rules align a little better, so that if you have a one pickup truck load limit, that Perqammon's also has that, and Chawan also has that, so that everybody's getting the same message across the board.
I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, we don't want everybody on the same schedule.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Not same clothes day.
I was making sure I was thinking about it right.
Were you here when they made that change? And do you know, like, do you recollect why they had that put in?
I do not, I do not know why they added the convenience centers. Do you know?
About the load limit? Do you know why they?
Oh, you're talking about that?
Why Gates had opted?
I have no idea. I don't know that that's, that's not a bad thing.
Okay.
That's not a bad thing.
So that's not a bad difference, then? Okay.
The load limit is not a bad thing. Convenience centers are meant for residential activities. They are not meant for you tearing down your barn to bring the entire thing to the site. If you don't have load limits, some people will impair others from being able to utilize the site. It's consideration for your neighbors.
So, no, I was just, because we were talking about getting them all on the same type of ordinance, I didn't know if there were several other changes, or if that was just the?
Also, you want to keep your sites cost-effective.
Yes.
People across the state, other counties, municipalities, we have a, we have a lot of allowances. Our communities can do a lot in our convenience centers for what they pay for, you know, solid waste in our areas. People that move here are very thankful for them because they've never had this much freedom. So I think the load limit is not a bad thing.
I had one more clarification. This is more for public, I think. So I've had discussions with people, and they say, oh, I live right across the county line, and the site down by Grants Texaco is so much closer for me, even though I live in Chawan County, I just drop it there when I go through your county. And, you know, I don't say, oh, I'm on the Board of Commissioners, I'm going to get you, or anything like that, but I sit and think, is that kosher? I mean, I know some of that goes on, but don't we officially tell people dispose of your waste in your county?
County sites are for county residents only and out-of-county resident landowners, but these sites are for the trash that you produce in the county. So if you own land in Gates County, but you live in, say, Virginia, or Chawan County, or Perqammon's County, or wherever, you can throw away trash in Gates County that you produce in Gates County and that comes from Gates County. So if you cut down a tree off your lot in Gates County, you can throw it away in a Gates County convenience site, you know, the limbs or, you know, your load today. But not if you own property in Gates County and you live in Perqammon's and you cut your tree down, you can't bring it to Gates County.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Definitely. I think the biggest misunderstanding is that you, your tax money here, what you pay here pays for disposal here. I think it's a misconception because we are a tri-county facility in Belvedere, but each county pays for their own waste.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
There is nothing else? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so with the amended agenda, this will put us moving down to public comments. Mr. Ebert, do we have anyone sign up to speak to the board? No? Okay. All right, so we'll move on to staff comments. Do we have any staff comments this evening? No? All right, moving right along. All right, we're moving into old business. We have a resolution for Board of Elections quarter cent sales tax, the Article 46 referendum to be on the ballot in March. Manager Sauer, could you address this item for the board and the audience? And I'm happy to pick up, too, with that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, the board is being asked to simply pass a resolution requesting that the Board of Elections place this matter on the ballot using the language that's in the state law, which is simply a yes or no question. The questions will be posed to the voters, doesn't come with any language about how the money might be used or will be committed to being used, it's just simply the approval of the additional .25% tax. And if we're going to shoot to have this on for the primary election, first Tuesday in March, I think it's incumbent upon us to get this request in front of the Board of Elections as quick as possible.
Right. And if I may, the board and various work sessions and discussions. Right, and, and if I may, the board and various work sessions and discussion have, have kind of had this conversation. We have the child nutrition program that we funded this past year with the Board of Education, and I think it's been a success, from what I've heard, with the students being able to have, you know, a breakfast and a lunch, regardless of having funds for that breakfast or lunch. During one of the work sessions, we had the SRO officer state that he felt many of the behavioral issues in the classrooms, different things, were possibly tied to kids just being hungry. And aside from that, in Gates County, we have a pretty significantly high level of food insecurity across the board for children and residents. And so what we have come across here was this quarter cent, quarter percent sales tax. And what that equates to is, for every hundred dollars spent in the county on purchasing products, it would be a quarter, a quarter added to every hundred dollars you spend. And that would help ensure the children in the community having lunch going forward, and breakfast going forward, in the schools without having to worry. If there was any overage from that, the conversations have leaned towards us focusing all of those funds toward food security. So anything beyond what is needed for the child nutrition program, those funds being able to roll to programs like GEMS, which is our food ministry, and, and distribution that does once a month. There's also a backpack ministry, where kids get to take backpacks home when they don't have food at home. And it is an incredible way to make sure that our kids especially are taken care of, but also just residents in general. Food should not be something that anybody is ever in need of, and this would just help our community in a big way. Again, though, on the ballot, it would just say for or against, and between now and March, just to prepare everybody, you will hear a lot about this, should this resolution pass, to go up there with lots of education coming forth on the different people that this can affect, and the, the huge impact this could have on Gates County as a community, and, and striving towards food security for all of our citizens. So, I will put that up for a vote, and then we can have the discussion, or for a motion, and then we can have the discussion, if we have a motion to approve the resolution to consider the one-quarter cent county tax, or county sales and use tax for voter referendum to the ballot for the primary election on March third, twenty-twenty-six.
I'll make that motion.
Alright.
I'll second it.
Alright, we'll open it up for discussion, do we have any comments, any input on-
Now, the, the quarter percent, now, as of right now, we send all of our sales tax money, you know, that's, that's generated from this county, it goes to Raleigh. And Raleigh turns around and sends a portion of that back to us. Now, is this in addition to what we already pay, or is it, we're already paying it, and Raleigh already has it, it's just a matter of we're asking them to send this additional quarter cent to us?
Well, it's a great question, because if you go to the dollar store and buy something for a dollar, you're gonna pay a dollar seven cents.
That's right.
And that quarter of a cent is gonna stay in Raleigh for use somewhere else in the, in the state budget. So, in essence, in, in, for some purchases, due to the rounding, there is inadvertently that extra bit of, of sales tax dollar that, that escapes the, the treasury of, of Gates County.
So, so all we're doing with this is just saying, we're not asking for anybody to pay any more sales taxes. We're just asking for Gates County to vote on, hey, folks in Raleigh that we send our money to, we would like to have control of our own money, and please let us have it back.
Right.
Because we think we can spend it wiser than you can.
And in comparison here, there's the printout where it shows Jones County, last year, with this, had an additional two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. Washington County, two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. Those are comparable counties as far as size and things. So, it's a nice chunk of money that, as Commissioner Barryman pointed out, belongs to us anyways, and unfortunately, the state gets to take advantage of if we don't pass this.
Yeah, I, I've got a couple things. One is, the way this is written, it says clearly, with voter approval to levy a local sales tax. It doesn't say to take a portion of already taxed, it says to levy. And I think it sends the message, one thing is, I, I don't think the public will support it, but neither here nor there. I think our school board, and this is a strong opinion, I know everyone knows I hold, is that until they take strong measures to restrain or address their expenditures, the vacant classrooms, et cetera, et cetera, and I'll talk more about this later, until that's done, I don't see us going out and telling the public, hey, we want you to consider more tax. And that's the way I read this, it is more tax, a quarter cent more, we want you to pay more tax before we even ask people to be more financially responsible with the money they're already getting. And I have problems with that, I think it sends the wrong message. But even if it passes, I realize the public still has to vote for it.
Any other comments on that? Commissioner Roundtree, Craddock? Nope?
Well, I would like that to be clarified, we got two different Commissioners sitting there. As county manager, is that correct? Is it, is it additional tax, or is it-
Yes, well, yeah, it, it's an additional quarter percent.
Alright, that is already being collected, or is it additional-
Due to rounding, but, but, but the board would actually be levying an additional point-two-five-
The amount of money that we're gonna pay when we go buy our dollar thing is not gonna change?
Yes, it is.
Not on a dollar.
Okay.
But again, if you buy a hundred dollar pair of shoes, it's gonna go up by twenty-five cents.
Okay.
It's twenty-five cent per hundred.
That's what I wanted to understand.
Essentially, yes.
Okay, alright.
Commissioner Roundtree, I think you were, were you going to speak, or no?
Oh, no, I have no comment.
Alright. So again, any school board concerns, funding concerns aside, I think feeding the kids is important. We have a motion, we have a second, so we're gonna call it a vote, all in favor, by show of hands? Any opposed? Alright, we have a four-one vote, that passes, passes to put the referendum on the ballot in March. Alright, moving on to the strategic plan update, I'm gonna call Mr. Willie Smith and Ms. Harry Riddick to the podium for this update.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Attorney, County Manager, members of the public. Those who do not know who I am, I apologize, I'm a little under the weather right now, so my New York fast-talking may be a little slower than it normally is. But my name is Willie R. Smith III, I am the Gates County Department of Social Services Director. Just to provide you all a brief overview of the strategic planning meetings that we have had over the last, I think, four weeks maybe, it's like every other week we've met, so there's been two meetings. But over the last two sessions, we've had, we've aligned on where Gates County is headed, and what it will take to get there. In our first meeting, we were focused on discovery and alignment, where we asked questions such as, what was a thriving community, what did it look like in five to ten years? And if we can accomplish one big thing in those five years, what would it be? Some of the themes that emerged were, excuse me, more usable amenities and resources, strong employment options with site-ready locations, quality schools, affordable housing, and reliable food access, upgraded water infrastructure and accessibility, among some other things. Strengths to build on, such as strong communication and collaboration at the table, clear vision and orientation, work ethic, low crime and community support. So get some gaps that we focus to close on, project follow-through, excuse me, a little. Okay, sorry. Decisions, decision values that we commented on, integrity, wisdom, respect, ethics. Early markers of success that we identified, concrete goals implemented on time. Can you do the other ones, please? I apologize, we're here, we're here meeting to-
Okay. At the second meeting that we had, we confirmed top community priorities, as he spoke of, the infrastructure, affordable housing and food access, employment with site-ready business locations, amenities, resources, and strong schools. We drafted some vision statements, admission statements, the vision, that, the vision statement that we came up with, and this is still, this is still working.
Can you give us a minute, could we take a recess for a moment? Can we, okay.
Yeah.
Can we have a moment?
I'll make a motion for temporary recess.
Alright. Five-minute recess?
Yeah.
How was enough?
Yeah.
Excitement for tonight. So, back to our second meeting. We've had two meetings other than some of the group went to a class in Chapel Hill at the School of Governance, which was really informative, like going through the steps of how to come up with a strategic plan. And it was things that you don't think about. They gave scenarios and stuff for the group to work through, which was really, really good. And before I go any further, I want to thank Renee for keeping us all on target. When we meet, she keeps us all going in the right direction, so I do appreciate that. I think I stopped with the vision statement and the mission statement. And these are working, you know, things, and we just kind of tossed some things out there for us to think about. The vision statement was a united, thriving Gates County that preserves its rural charm while embracing progress from every family and community. The mission statement was strengthening families, support community values, and guide growth that honors our rural roots and shared future. So like I said, these were statements that we had come up with, and we as a group collectively, you know, if you've got suggestions or that sort of thing around it, we will certainly welcome those. We discussed some practical context of the county, and a lot of it centered around Merchant's Mill Prawn and the fact that they generate something like $200,000 a year for our county. And potentially using that as a leverage point for amenities and branding for our partnership. Action items, elected officials, we had asked for them to gather details on foreclosed property and to explore options to repurpose abandoned properties that we have. The team had talked about inviting members from the Gatesville Town Council, engage churches and other civic groups in this process of coming up with a strategic plan. And our last action that we had at that meeting was a doodle pole was set up trying to find a date for everybody. It's kind of hard to get everybody on the same page on the same day. So what's next? We're moving from internal alignment to an external engagement, like involving businesses, having civic roundtables, a housing and food access workshop, and a school and youth listening session, as well as online and paper surveys. We talked about Sunday night surveys to get some input from the county residents themselves and distribute some of the paper copies through churches and civic groups, the library, and then the town halls. We will bring those inputs back as a short engagement report out with recommended edits to goals and drafts for our matrix with the baseline targets and owners and some timelines. We have kind of set a timeline, it's not written in stone, but we've kind of tried to set a year as our timeline to gather all the information, all the input, and be able to come up with a strategic plan. Board support request within the next 60 days, authorize the external engagement plan, four sessions and the survey, add a Gatesville Town Council representative to the team, direct staff to deliver a property action memo on foreclosed and abandoned parcels, and adopt the success matrix framework and a 90-day work plan with the owners and dates that we come up with. Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
I want to thank you, Ms. Riddick, and the strategic planning is very necessary. You know, as we always know, if you have a plan, you plan to fail. And to come together as a collaborative, the different departments, the citizens, we can engage on improvements that we want to see for our county and move forward in that direction. So it's a very positive thing, and I encourage everyone to be engaged, because the more participation that we have, the better the strategic planning would be. And one thing about strategic planning, it's a living document, it's ever-evolving to the needs of the citizens, to the needs of the county, and it's always going to benefit us. So I encourage you all to be engaged in the strategic planning. Your input is very necessary.
Thank you.
Ms. Riddick, just for the public's elaboration, how was this kicked off for the strategic planning effort?
I...
Somebody asked you to do it. How did that happen?
Yes. Emily asked me, she contacted me and Mr. Sauer, they had contacted me as a member of the school board if I would be willing to serve on the strategic planning and if I would be willing to go to that class that was in Chapel Hill.
But it is a strategic plan for the entire county?
Yes. Yes. There are multiple department heads from within the county that are part of it, commissioners, Ms. Draper, so there's other members, it's not just me and three other people, there's a fair number of people that are on it. And we're hoping to be able to get other members to be able to join so we can get their input on things, because the more, just like Mr. Roundtree said, the more people that you can get ideas from and the citizens, the better it will be.
Not poked at you, but to be honest with you, I'm stunned that the county board of commissioners did not have a strategic planning effort at all done. I participated in the county where I work a week and a half ago with a strategic planning session where the board first outlined their goals and then handed them to the departments that more fully developed. And prior to that, previous organization I was been in, it's always the leadership start off with giving some goals. And I do appreciate, this is not a criticism of you, Ms. Riddick, it's just that I would have expected that at some point we as a board would have been asked to engage and give our strategic goals specifically for this purpose, so...
Well, one of the things in that class, I think it was a little enlightening of the number of counties that don't have a strategic plan.
Yeah, I believe it.
In the state, and how they were going about, and that's what this class was for, was to give direction on how to do it, who to involve in these, you know, to give us direction. And we even have this nice workbook, oh my God, it was almost like, it could have been a semester course, it really could have been, but it was really good in knowing that we're not the only one that didn't have a strategic plan. There's a lot of counties that are a lot bigger nowers that didn't have a strategic plan.
I don't doubt that at all, just my point being...
No, and it has been mentioned at various work sessions, bringing up a strategic plan. I know the most recent work session at the EOC, it was brought up at, which is the Emergency Operations Center, explain the acronyms there. It was brought up there, and part of that is the...
No offense, Ms. Chairman, mentioning it to the board is not having us involved.
Sir, if you will let me finish, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The, I keep hearing how our county manager and staff need to be more proactive for our community, keep hearing how they need to be doing things without coming to us for permission to do this and that and another. And so our county manager and our clerk have brought forth the effort of strategic planning. There was a class found, there were different names put forth, they are doing this from in-house as far as organizing the strategic plan effort as leaders of our county that we have entrusted to do this with. The county manager, the clerk, the assistant county manager, various people, I have been in those meetings, yes, I did attend the class. When we mentioned that I was attending the class at the EOC during the work session, Commissioner Roundtree said, "I would like to attend that as well." And he did. There was no other input from other commissioners at the time when this conversation came up. So at this time, the county staff is engaging in the strategic plan, which at this class, at the School of Government, was stated that many counties have the staff do it without commissioner input at all. It is something that the staff take upon themselves as leadership to move forward with for the county, to benefit the county. Many counties have no commissioners onboard because they feel like they shouldn't have a say in it. I have asked to be able to listen, to be there, to input, to take the class, because I'm curious about learning about strategic planning. So I give kudos and commend our staff for moving forward with a strategic plan for our county that we have never had before.
No criticism here about the employees doing that, there's none here. It's about lack of involvement of us. To be honest with you, I think it's great what they've done, but I really think we should have specifically had, we're elected leaders, we're supposed to give guidance, and quite honestly, mentioning it here and there in sort of innuendo and then saying, "Y'all go do it," I don't think it's fair to them to try and read the minds of their elected officials. That's the point, is I think...
Well, part of the next phase with the external is they're going to be putting out information to the public, or to the public officials to give their input into it, it's part of their process as they move forward for more external input. And you will be reached out to by the staff, or by the ones conducting the strategic plan for your input at that time. There are phases that they have in motion, and as she mentioned, they're going to be reaching out to employees, they're going to be reaching out to the elected officials, they're going to be reaching out to the citizens, who is who they should be reaching out to. So I'm going to thank you, Ms. Riddick, for your presentation.
Yes.
And for your update, and we're going to move along with this agenda.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to item C, under Old Business, we have the local reentry council update. Manager Sauer, could you address this item for the board and the audience?
Yes, very briefly, we've been in communication with Greg Singleton, with OIC, and the group from Bertie, Hartford, Choone, and Gates Counties for the reentry project. The chair and I were on a conference call this afternoon. Mr. Singleton has meetings with a couple of different very large foundations statewide who have reached out to him and expressed interest and want to open a conversation. There's been no commitment yet, but he is very much engaged, staying in communication and trying to help us avert another situation like we had last month, and that we will have ongoing updates.
County manager, I have a question concerning the reentry meetings. When are these scheduled, and are they commencing now, even though the funding's not in place?
We are still in the startup stage. We've had meetings with the College of the Albemarle, with North Carolina DOT, and there was one other community college, I think, that spoke to Mr. Singleton. DOT has a program where they put together a highway worker academy, and with Gates County having a maintenance yard adjacent to where we have them housed at the EOC building there on the former prison site, DOT is very excited about working with all four counties to have an academy, is the way they describe it. But they will offer courses, not just for highway maintenance, but some of those soft skills for interview preparation, some other areas, but they are not in the service providing business yet, but they are in the relationship building and making connections. They've got a number of folks who are already out of the correctional system and are already
on the right track is hugely important as far as the first step to your success. You have to take care of yourself first. And housing options are being met, different things like that. So they are having some measurable successes, and I think that's encouraging.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, if we have nothing else on that, we're going to go to item D, draft RFQ, planning, design and construction for community senior center. Again, Mr. Sauer, if you could address this.
Thank you. In your agenda packet this evening is a draft of a proposed request for qualifications for dissemination to bring in design teams for the board to interview and to have an opportunity to select the group that will work with us using the grant money that's been available for a number of years. It's the, they call it the SKIF, the State Construction Infrastructure Fund. It's a total of about $500,000, and the county had already utilized about $40,000 of it for some of the planning that the summit group did. This was initially to get money to do renovations at the community center, but I think once the board realized the condition of the building, the mechanical systems, the roof is probably the worst. I know Commissioner Craddock's been up on the roof a couple of times with Johnny Green from the school system to see things, but the building envelope itself is a sponge. There is no insulation, no moisture barrier. When the rain hits those bricks, it just pulls it right into the building, and that's why they have the penalty. Nonetheless, the state has accepted our request to repurpose those dollars into architectural and engineering and planning dollars so that the board can engage, a team that can come up with a plan, come up with construction drawings. The county already owns land that you've talked about, designating at the Commerce Center above the library location, so that when funding opportunities come before us, the Gates County Board of Commissioners can say, "We have a shovel-ready site with plans in hand, and we hope to get this out on the street and have some interested folks come talk to you real soon."
I feel like before we send any other commissioners on the roof, we need to talk to our risk management team. Just saying. All right.
Who prepares our RFQs?
I've done a couple in the past, and I asked Ms. Draper to take a look at some surrounding areas, and she definitely took it to a higher level than what I've worked on in the past, and I think this turned out really well. That's the beauty of the public sector. We can borrow from our neighbors, it's not stealing.
All right.
The only thing that I would just like to see added, and it's just because of past experience and dealing with A and E firms, once the contracts have been let out, is that in the scope of services for, in note two for the construction, we need to make sure that we specifically lay out the management of the process of RFIs and semitels, because a lot of times they'll come back and say, "Well, that's above and beyond."
Well, and I think once the board has had a chance to listen to the qualifications of the firms, the way North Carolina law is set up, you select a firm based on qualifications, then you negotiate a contract, and those, I think, would be the elements where we'd really need your help reviewing those different elements. Point well taken.
All right, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions or comments in regards to this?
I think it'd be helpful to have a motion on record allowing us to proceed with this.
I'd like to make a motion to proceed with the RFQ process.
I'll second that motion.
All right, any further discussion?
Just a question, we do have funds in-house, don't like exercising contractors unnecessarily. We have money in-house to pay for the design services.
We have, it's around $460,000, grant money, no local dollars, available for these services.
Got it, okay.
Perfect. All right, so we will call for a vote by a show of hands, all in favor. That is unanimous, so it will pass and we will move forward. Next, new business, moving right along, we have a Halloween safety plan. If I could invite Sheriff Campbell to the podium to update the board regarding the Halloween safety plan of action. Gatesville's busiest or second busiest if we count the Christmas parade day of the year.
No doubt about that. Good evening, folks, county attorney, commissioners, county manager. I'm coming tonight with a new plan, something we've never done for Halloween, and that is shutting the town of Gatesville completely down. So for Halloween night, we've had too many close calls, and I had one right in front of me last year, and I told my wife right then and there, this, we're going to make a plan and we're going to change this. So on Halloween night at 6:00, every road coming into Gatesville will be shut down. There will not be one car on highways into the town of Gatesville from 6:00 until 7:45. At 7:30, my deputies and myself will ride around and encourage everybody to hustle up because we're going to open the roads back up. So I'm hoping that all goes well. We're going to put these mobile signs out, letting everybody know on the 20th that at this time and at this date, you're not going to be able to come through the town of Gatesville. So I talked with the fire chief today in Gatesville, we're going to use two of his trucks to help block the roadway, and I'll have two deputy vehicles on Main Street, nose to nose, nobody will come through. So people can walk in the street, kids can walk across the street, and I don't worry about a car clipping them. So I wanted to do this before we had an accident. So anyway, that's the plan.
Will people living in Gatesville be able to get in their cars and leave during that time, or are they stuck at their homes too?
They, at 7:45, everything will be opened back up. So I'm encouraging everybody to get here early, do your trick-or-treating, and leaving is going to be maybe a little bit dicey, but usually everybody stays until the very last minute, and everybody's out at one time. So anyway.
As someone with four kids out there, I greatly appreciate that. It is scary every year.
Yeah, well, that one really scared me last year, and I said, "Well, we're going to just, we can shut it down for an hour and a half, and I don't think we'll bother anybody." There is ways to get around Gatesville, but Halloween night, we're going to be safe this year. And just, I don't know, I've been to the Halloween event, but there's around over 400 people walking in the town of Gatesville, there was last year. So anyway, thank you.
Yes, chef, I have a question. Would there be any signage such as detour or for people that's traveling through that's unaware from other cities, would there be any way to redirect?
We can put up detour signs. What I'm planning on doing is having a mobile message board coming into Gatesville on 37 and High Street, 137 High Street, then down at Todd's Pharmacy, and then up here in Gatesville at the fire department, everything will be shut down. I'm hoping that getting it out early enough that anybody has a question or, and we'll be, I'll have some deputies roaming around. If somebody comes up and says, "They got lost, I don't know how to get anywhere through Gatesville," we'll get them around. But at that particular time, I just, no more cars through Gatesville, so thank you.
Another question just for Halloween, okay, because I've got two 14-year-olds, and they're like, "Dad, are we allowed to go in Gatesville?" I'm like, "Nope, you're over the age." "Dad, if we're not trick-or-treating, are we allowed to go dressed up?" And I'm like, "I don't think so." And several of their friends have told me this, they said, "Are you serious, Mr. Forsyte? And is there guidelines? Clearly, they shouldn't be trick-or-treating at that age, but are they not allowed to dress up because they say, 'Call some adults dress up.'"
I don't know about the dress-up part. I don't know about the dress-up part.
That's a socialization thing. A lot of the kids want to even go out just to socialize and see their friends.
And there's multiple other places that'll be having trick-or-treat events that same night. And this time, it winds up on a Friday night, so we're probably busy.
There are typically teens of all ages dressed up out there, and a lot of the houses are very gracious and even offering them candies.
I might have let mine approach the doors.
But, you know, there are kids of all ages dressed up.
Sorry, time of year.
No problem, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we are going to move into the updates from the clerk. So, Madam Clerk, if you are ready to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I have several things this evening. The first item behind the memo in the board packet is going to be your policy and procedures for appointments to county boards, commissions and committees, what we would call citizen advisory boards, or in short, you can call it CAPS. This is going to outline how Gates County recruits, appoints and supports its members. It covers qualifications, term limits, attendance expectations and reappointment criteria to help ensure consistent and transparent participation. And so with this before you, I'm asking for consideration of approval by the board of commissioners for this policy. Excuse me.
We have read a lot of these because there are several things in here. I have a question because you may know faster than I can.
Okay.
And I only ask this because I know it has been brought to my attention that they may have one that wants to be amended or tabled for future amendment. Does it state in this general policy and procedure a limit of how many can be on the board? I know certain things, I see five, and there was a question of that.
I don't believe in, hold on, I don't remember if we did five.
I saw some five voting numbers.
I don't see it, I'm scanning this first piece that you put before us.
Not the general policy and procedures, it's just basically stating you want geographically and demographically diverse. In each individual rules and procedures, that's where I had more details, so we can definitely get in the weeds with that.
We can adopt this and then discuss those later because that's not in there?
Absolutely.
And the other thing, the other question I had is, you know, something that we might consider adding is how we go through the applications.
Okay.
You know, is it first come, first served? Is it, did I miss it in the?
Selection process.
Selection process. I might have just completely missed it.
It's going to be section four, and then you're going to drop down, it'll have an A, B, C, D, E.
And just to fill that while they're looking over that, that section four goes over the selection process, just stating that the eligible applications are evaluated using certain criteria, including expertise, board experience, contributive potential, leadership potential and diversity. So just some parameters as boards are approved going forward.
Yeah, and I did see all this, but I didn't know if it was going to be a timeline when we receive the applications. I know some boards we, or advisory boards, we have a hard time filling.
Right, right.
One that's coming up tonight, we're not going to have a hard time filling.
Okay.
I've been reached out to numerous, by numerous people all over the county, and I'm just wondering what the selection process. We've never had anything in stone, it's like from this date to this date.
So right now, the way it's been done is that we've kept applications on file for two years. There unfortunately hasn't been anything consistent, which is what my goal is towards, is to be more consistent across the board with all the boards. So we can definitely table this. It's not going to affect any appointments or reappointments that we, if we want to get in the weeds a little bit more on the details, it won't affect any appointments because I do know I have some applicants here tonight that have submitted applications.
Do you have a preference either way based on that?
And again, this is the board's document, so it can be amended as needed.
Yeah, I think I'm fine as far as the, how we actually select it and how we actually form the committees and all that, because that's kind of what this document is about. It's not about the specific committee, it's about how you form the committee, it's kind of give them more of a detail, this is the way we should do this, and this is the standard operating procedure.
Yeah, no, I think it's great, it's strong. Like I said, my thing was I didn't want it to lock it into like a five-member, if it was a board that could potentially have more, more...
That comes in...
With the individual.
Yeah, with the individual board.
Yeah, I was just making sure it wasn't also mentioned in here of a cap on CAPS, okay, in general.
No, it's not, it's anywhere.
All right, any other input on this particular document? All right, so do we want to move forward with a motion to approve this as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the policy procedures for appointments to Gates County's boards and commissions and committees as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second? No? All right, so...
Under current rules, we call the vote with or without a second.
Okay, current rules, I guess we're evaluating, adding the second then two.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all right, well, we'll call to a vote. All in favor of approving? Any against? Okay, so we have 4-1.
All right, so next, we do have, so resolutions are being drafted for each citizen advisory board if there's not one of record, as well as any new boards created in the future. Each community advisory board will have its own rules of procedure, like we just discussed, tailored to its specific work, and both will need to be adopted by the board of commissioners going forward. Tonight, I do have four sets of resolutions and rules of procedures ready for consideration for the following: animal services advisory board, merchants' commerce center committee, opioid prevention and intervention committee, and the recreation advisory board. I did pick these because these were the most recent. There was obviously discussion, but again, for formality and to have everything consistent, if it's not a record, I felt it was appropriate to go forward this way. Again, we can table it, it will not affect any appointees that may be made this evening.
Yeah, so the one I have the most concern about is the animal advisory board.
Okay.
Nothing against the people that's already turning their applications in, it's nothing like this, it's just you sit back and think about how many animals are in Gates County and making sure between, from dogs, horses, cattle, goats, just the whole broad of it. I feel like we might need more people on this board than five.
Okay, we can definitely leave that open-ended or...
Just so we can cover.
Right.
All areas.
Okay.
Yeah, I would also like to see this table as far as just the animal services.
Okay.
My questions are about the, if y'all are done with the animal, the merchant center one.
Okay.
Not so much being opposed to it, but my problem is, the concern I have is I almost feel like I've had a couple of people that served on the planning commission saying, "Well, we're never used." We have a board that seems to be somewhat related.
On the planning board, I'm sorry, is that what you said?
Planning, yes. And some people saying, "Oh, we only met once in a year's time," or last year, they said, "We met for the first time in nine months or something." I'm just wondering if we're creating boards and we're having difficulty to fill some of them, is there overlap here? Have we looked closely at, does that board, could it serve the function of this board as well versus creating another board where we have to find people willing to serve? Sometimes that's difficult in a small county. And if we have a planning board already, is there some of these duties that could be absorbed or performed by that board that already exists?
Right.
That's my small question.
I'm not opposed to condensing boards.
I would just add that your planning board has some legal responsibilities that the commissioners have imposed on them and asked them, related to the zoning ordinance, then you've got the board of adjustments. As I understood, the commerce center board or committee, this is really a one-and-done project where they'll come in and bring the board a recommendation for where you might want to head, but I wouldn't think it would be a perpetual board.
It seems like all the more reason why the planning board could just do it as part of their current workload if they're not overloaded. I just asked to consider that, what the duties are in the workload.
Do we have any other input on that?
Yeah, I think you make a legitimate point as far as, you know, are we creating a board just for the sake of having a board type of thing? And is it something that could possibly be handled by another board or another committee? Maybe we do kind of just table this too, and then we can have some further discussion and talking about looking at all the boards in general, and do we have a bunch of boards... And do we have a bunch of boards out there that really aren't being used that this could be used for? Or is it the specific purpose for this board is outside of that? And I think that was originally when we first kind of talked about this, is that it would be like outside of that and more focused on this area and what we can do to, it's not really a zoning thing. It's more of a, what we can do to this, to this area to be able to.
And this would be more community guided versus the Planning Board having those. If I'm, if I remember correctly, it was to have more citizen community involvement in the planning process for this.
Right, that Merchant Commerce Park Committee was designed for community input and also exclusively for that particular project of development of that park. And after that park is developed, then, you know, that'd be it for that committee.
Which is going to be a several year process, obviously. It's ongoing.
And this is another reason why I felt it would be helpful, especially for, for future clerks or board members or whatever the case may be, where if something comes up and they have a question, we have everything documented and recorded. Because there's, there's discussion of boards being talked about. Come, come, you know, we need citizens for this advisory board, but no true information in the minutes as to why it was formed and, and what the purpose was and the long-term outcome. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at with that.
So maybe we move more into a global overarching review of the boards that we already have. And if we have some type of admission statement of what their responsibilities are and what they're originally due for. And then we can kind of convince some of these things.
Yeah, and, and you know, the overview, that's, this is more of like a boilerplate to kind of get me started, you know, ten months in now.
We do have a whole list of boards. Like there's a whole lot for our clerk to keep up with too, so.
Yeah, verbiage and all that, this is really good.
It's really, this, this direction we need to be going.
Again, back to the Merchants Commerce Center, the board engaged a consultant for a couple of feasibility studies. Those draft documents are now in possession of the committee chair to take the next step. But that, that, that product is available.
Yeah, I was going to hit a little bit on that in my commissioner update. But yeah, we, we kind of are at that point where the, the committee needs to meet again. I know that there's been a couple other interested folks that would like to be a part of that, which is great. And I'm glad to see we got some more community involvement to be able to get some more experienced folks as far as, especially with the senior center and all that on the docket as well. So I think that's all, we're heading in all, all the right direction. I'm kind of thinking this, more of a right turn here and taking it more of a, let's look at all the boards and how many do we really need as a county at this point in time? And are we trying to have boards that really have the same functions or shared functions within?
Same direction, yeah.
Yeah, so that way we be as efficient as we can. And then it's because I think we're going down the right road with this as far as what we want to do as far as number one, we, we have the rules in place of how we're going to create it. Number two, now we need to have procedures in place as far as how each one of the boards are going to operate and all that kind of stuff. So I think that's the right direction.
So we're looking at tabling then all of these until we evaluate further the combination of various committees and give us further time to look over each one.
Yeah.
If we have consensus there, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
It's not to take away at all from your.
No, no.
It's great, it's phenomenal.
This is good conversation. Okay, so let's jump into applications then. Okay, so in regard to some email correspondence, email I generated yesterday regarding the discussion with Ms. Horton Wiggins, the Clerk of Superior Court, Ms. Fannie Langston's term with the jury commission has expired. This application that I just distributed is from 2023 and was not included in your agenda packet. I spoke with Ms. Fannie Langston this morning and she has stated that she has put her reappointment application in the mail. I verbally confirmed everything on this application and the only thing that, that has changed is that, that very bottom question about reapplying for a position, how long have you served? She has actually served since 2009. The statute does outline that the jury commission is composed of three members, one appointed by the senior resident Superior Court Judge, one by the Clerk of Superior Court, and then one by the Board of Commissioners. The term length is two years and members may be reappointed to successive terms. In discussion with Ms. Langston this morning, she advised she was willing and able to serve another term and couldn't be here this evening to appear before the board, but stated that she will be watching, so, hey, Ms. Langston. And, and I'm learning this process as, as I really get in the weeds of this. And, and I know some of you all are as well with these boards. So I hope that this information is enough for the board to move forward with.
Info background, I would like to just, just share for the board. This is a very important role for the Clerk of Court. It's time sensitive because they are building the calendar for 2026. And they have a limited window to review death notices, to review changes of, of address. It's a very tedious, time, time-consuming effort. I think they only meet once or twice. They don't, this is not a year-round type activity. It's to help get that, that, it's to help validate the jury pool, sort of like when the Board of Elections scans through the, the registrations to make sure we don't have folks that, that are no longer with us on the voting rolls. So it's, it's a very, it's a lot of work.
Right, and I actually had a moment to step over to the Clerk of Court this afternoon to try to get a better understanding on this. She said that they typically serve like three hours. So, so it's not a lot of time that they put in, but they do have training and that kind of thing that they have to do. And I take full responsibility for this oversight for, for missing it. And her term expired.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open up for questions and comments.
I, I talked to the clerk today at length about details and everything. I'm pretty satisfied this is the right thing to do.
Okay.
She, the, the clerk was really good. She pointed out in great detail what goes into this. And I, to be honest, being the question guy, I'm like, well, if you get to appoint one and then the one's supposed to be from the board, you're really telling us the one to appoint. She made a very sound argument about this, Ms. Fannie, I didn't know her. But she was like, she knows the county very well. She's done this a bunch of times. They each divvy up the work into thirds, the three board members, and go through it pretty steadily. And sound like it was a very efficient, smart thing to do. We got somebody that's willing to serve here. It seems like an easy yes to me, so.
I agree, yeah.
And I'd like to also agree with Commissioner Forsythe. Reappointment of Ms. Fannie Langston would be the positive thing and the right thing to do. She most definitely is qualified. And with the window that the county manager was speaking about, need to act quickly. And I think it's a no-brainer, in my opinion.
All right, well, we can have a motion to, go ahead and move forward with that. We can have a motion to approve Ms. Fannie Langston for the jury commission?
I'll make the motion.
All right.
Second.
All in favor? My show of hands, and that is unanimous. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank y'all, okay. Moving on to the applications that were in your packet. We have Ms. Ruba Green-Holly. She has applied for the Merchants Commerce Center Committee. She is not in attendance this evening. She, she had to coach a game. We have Ms. Cosby.
Run. Run, say that one more time.
Roni.
Rondeja Cosby. She is here with us tonight. We have Evan Nguyen. He is here with us tonight. Kristen Black, she is here with us tonight. I'm sorry, Ms. Cosby and Mr. Nguyen for Opioid Prevention and Intervention Committee. Ms. Kristen Black for the Animal Services Advisory Board. And Ms. Connie Barnes for the Animal Services Advisory Board. They are all here, so.
All right. I would invite, and you don't have to, I know some are not public speakers, but if any of you would like to come up and speak on, on the boards that you'd like to be a part of or introduce yourself, you are welcome to. Well, come on up, just introduce yourself and let us make sure we're on the right page. I think this is Ms. Barnes, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, my name is Constance Barnes. I lived in Gates County in Sunbury for quite a few years. Relocated to Martin County for a few years. And I've come back, you know, like a bad penny, you just keep coming back and keep turning up. I do live in Gates. I'm right off of Rooks Road. If you've gone down Rooks Road, you may not see the house and the horse barn because we're way back in the field. My lifetime partner, Mr. Jody Blanchard, and I purchased 11 acres. We have six horses, five and a half because one's only like that big, but he's the most obnoxious one. We do have dogs. And the purpose of me wanting to be on this committee is my love for my fur babies. My horse's trail ride, my three-year-old granddaughter, our three-year-old granddaughter, is doing barrel racing pole bending on a horse, not a pony, out at Terry Temples in Lynch's Corner as she took reserve champion her first year doing it. Very proud of her as she just turned three. So the love that I have for the animals, as well as my experience with city and government municipalities. I was the budget officer for Edcom Department of Social Services for six years. I was the finance director for the City of Portsmouth Community Service Board, which is mental health substitutes. And I'm now with the City of Virginia Beach Department of Human Services, and I'm on the finance team. And we're working on $107 million budget for 2027 right now.
God bless you.
So, you know, just the love of the animals that I have. And, you know, I have a belief that if you can't afford to feed them and take care of them, you don't need to have them. I did work with UsarL when I was here prior to leaving Gates County, which is United Gates Equine Rescue League. I've had some training in body score and horses. So I feel that, you know, I can really work with the county and go by UsarL's rules, which are educate first, seize later. And, you know, I'm a firm believer in educating people about how to properly take care of their animals if they don't know for the sake of the animals. Then if you have to go further steps, do what you have to do. So my education, I have a bachelor's degree in accounting. I have a master's degree with accounting concentration. I have a master's human resource management. And I have a master's of accounting and finance with certified fraud and auditing. And I am a certified fraud examiner that can testify in court. Yes, so ears still up, right?
Well, thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
I was going to say if anybody has any.
I want to, I want to thank you for your community service and your engagement on the, on the board.
I'm very familiar with doing ordinances. I'm actually working on an ordinance for the City of Virginia Beach right now to put new policies and procedures in place for the federal funds that the city gets. So I'm very familiar how municipalities work.
All right.
Terry Temple's awesome too.
So what's funny about this is my daughter started riding out there when she was three. And she's 31 now and has timber.
My 39-year-old started out there, yeah, years ago. And she rode barrel racing. Sarah Forsythe.
I know Sarah.
And then the youngest, the 13-year-old has even rode with Terry. And Terry made me get on a horse. So my wife, my wife said, I never thought that would happen, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. And we will, and I'm going to look, will we be collectively voting on these then, I think? Okay, I was going to say if anybody else had wanted to do an introduction or address the board?
Come on.
All right. And this, this is going to be Ms. Kristen Black?
Yeah.
Let's see.
My name is Kirsten Black. I've lived in Gates County since 2012. Before that, I lived in Maryland and I was a vet tech for about 20 years there. I also ran an animal hospital for several years.
But you're from Alabama, I'm told by accent.
That's right. Originally from Germany.
Yeah.
Okay.
Became a citizen in '22. But I've been in the States since '83. Anyway, I figured my experience as a vet tech would help with this board. I'm only a small animal now, so definitely will need other people on the board that will do a large animal. But yeah, that's me.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Black, for bringing your expertise and your knowledge of animals. Thank you.
Ms. Cosby.
I am Ms. Cosby. I am a psychiatric nurse practitioner. I moved here in 2000. Went to Gates County High School for a couple of years. I was actually in Sarah Forsythe's class. I went to College of the Albemarle, got my RN. Went to UNC Wilmington, got my bachelor's. And then I got my master's degree in 2020, right after COVID. I actually have a loved one in the county who, when I was getting my masters, when I was choosing my master's degree program, became addicted to heroin. And so I was introduced to what that entails, loving somebody with heroin. I was, got introduced to a lot of other children who are adults now, who are in the county addicted to heroin. So I switched my major. My major initially was just as a family nurse practitioner. I switched it to psych so that I could do mental health. So I have experience. I've been working at Riverside in Hampton, Virginia for five years. I do detox, I do adults, I do children. Just recently, I opened up my own business, Bright Shadows, so I do telehealth. I was, me and Mary Berry were trying to bring family medicine and psych out here. You guys have a very unique.
Mary's my niece.
Availability when it comes to buildings. So unfortunately, working out of a bank and putting children in a vault for therapy wasn't therapeutic. So we had to think of other avenues. So I actually have an office now in Elizabeth City. Gates County has always been my heart ever since I moved out here in 2000. So I look forward to helping in any way, shape, or form. I do, like I said, I can do therapy, medication management. I have foreigners practitioners under me. I have two therapists under me. I have case managers. I have the works. So just looking forward, my team is very excited to do anything they can help with Gates County, Pasquotank County. So we have a lot of different initiatives. I'm working with some people in Pasquotank currently to get some mental health services in the school. So they're trying to get with the schools and be able to provide that because there are schools that have therapists in them, but they don't have that access to medication management. So we're just looking to provide that. We're looking to be able to provide it to people who don't have insurance, whatever that gap is between Medicaid and not having insurance, just making sure that they don't miss out on that.
Yeah. I'm incredibly excited with the expertise. I will say between you and our other applicant for this, as the commissioner that gets to be on the opioid board, I was very excited to see both of your applications come through.
Yes, you're going to be a valuable asset to the opioid community.
Yeah, yeah, very much. Thank you for applying, yeah.
All right, I'm getting, I think a no, I don't know. Are we moving?
Feels compelled to come. Shamed him into it.
I was like, if I keep looking at him, maybe he'll get up.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Evan Nguyen. I am originally from Gates County. I, I grew up here. After graduation, I went to UNC Chapel Hill and got my Farm D in Campbell University. So I'm, I'm currently a practicing pharmacist. I spent a little bit of time working at Todd's Pharmacy when I was in high school. That didn't quite work out after I graduated. And so I'm, I'm actually working at Roanoke Chauvin Hospital currently as a hospital pharmacist. When I heard about this, this commission, I had a, again, a heart for the county. I have some, some friends and acquaintances that were affected by the opioid epidemic. We treat folks all the time at the hospital that are affected by that as well. Here in the county, I've, I've done some things with opioid removal from the community. We had some take-back events where we teamed with the Sheriff's Department to accept unused or unneeded prescription medications through one of the, the take-back receptacles. I've also worked on getting one of those installed at the hospital at RCH to be able to get some of those drugs out of the community that are not being utilized anymore. So I'm excited to, to serve and work with the, the county and the community to tackle this problem.
Very excited. I also got to start it at Todd's Pharmacy, but I didn't, I didn't go to pharmacy school. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I think that was everyone except for Ms. Ruba Green-Holly, who is not able to be here, like I said, coaching tonight. Her application is also in the packet with her resume attached, so.
And yes, you can adopt it or approve this as one motion as presented.
I would, I'd just like to point out that no doubt Ms. Green, looking at her resume, she's highly qualified too. But if we're considering the Merchant Center Committee versus the Planning Committee, do we want to hold off on that? On approving her for a position on a board that we're not, haven't settled on absolutely?
I would say probably at this point in time, yes. And the reason my thought is going here is that just because the, the boards are already been, already been created. We, we already have people to sit on it. We've already had people approved to be on it. So at this point in time, we should, and she's more than qualified, and I'd love to have her on there.
So move forward with the approval, and then, um, should the board be consolidated, then we'll have to address that at that time.
Right.
Okay.
Does the rest of the verbiage need to be finished in the other advisories before we start voting?
You mean the, the resolutions and the rules of procedures? No, I mean, they, they, is that what you're speaking of?
Yeah. Yeah, we can vote to have the member, um, or the applicants approved, and then we can always amend as, as we afford. So those other documents tabled until next month, hopefully we'll be able to move forward in November with that, but we can go ahead and appoint these.
Okay.
All right, I make a motion, we approve these, all five applicants.
As presented.
Yep.
I second the motion.
All right, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all.
Okay, I have more updates. Sorry, this is a long, long time.
No, we're good. Go for it.
Okay, um, so just some more updates for the audience, both here and online. The Gates County Historical Society will host their Veterans Day service 11/11 at 11:00 AM, right here in the board chambers, excuse me. Uh, Trevor Buck will be the guest speaker, and all are welcome to attend. The American Legion Post 102 will be hosting their Veterans Day celebration 11/11 from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and that's in Ahoski at the No Man's Land area off of Main Street. Chad Stevens, the Veteran Services Officer, he will be on-site to assist with any questions. And they did advise, in the event of rain, the service will be held at the actual American Legion Post, and that address is 116 McLaughlin Street in Ahoski. Also, the Albert Mall Region Toys for Tots is back in Gates County. After several years without a local chapter, most businesses here in the county have a drop box for unwrapped donations as here, as well as here downstairs in the lobby. You can also donate monetarily online, and families can apply for toys for the upcoming Christmas season. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if anyone has them. And then lastly, just, um, county administration, we are currently looking for more opportunities to reach more people on possibly other social media outlets. But, uh, as most of you are aware, we, we use Facebook. And I just ask if you do not currently follow our page, to follow it. And that's all I have, unless y'all have any questions for me.
Nah, thank you. I do encourage anybody that hasn't been to the Veterans Day program to come. It is incredible every year. They typically, and I've watched me say this and it not happened this year, but they typically have the museum rooms over on the side open, just some historical things for Gates County. It's pretty, pretty incredible.
November 11th, where is that?
It's November 11th here at 11:00 AM. So, 11/11 at 11:00.
Yes.
Oh, every year, yeah.
Yes.
Regardless of the day.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so moving into the budget amendments, I trust that everyone has had a chance to review the budget amendments received in your package, as well as the additional one that was emailed to the board on Monday. Um, are there any questions for county managers that were? And we can go forward and say we have the, um, just for the transparency of it. If you could highlight, that would be great, okay.
The first two, F-26, 14, and 15, are both grant dollars being carried forward to finish out the AIA assessments for both water and wastewater. F-2616 is a grant with cooperative extension for nutrition. Uh, O-17 is the dollar amount approved by the board at the last meeting for the local reentry council of $6,091. And the item that was brought to us, um, most recently, uh, has been part of the efforts of, um, Mr. Robertson to help close out a grant that the sheriff has been working on for about five years. And the last accounting adjustment is $335.86. And they've used a total of $84,269.66. And we ask your, um, approval for these five amendments.
Okay, do we have any discussion on those?
I'd just ask, Sheriff, would you like to talk at all about your grant, what you've done with that money? From what you were describing to me, I thought it was pretty worthwhile for the public to know about it. If we could take the time to do that.
Yeah, no. I'm always.
Just us passing a privilege.
I'm always for us having the sheriff.
Before I even get started, without Bill Ward and the money that he is giving the sheriff's office, none of this would have happened. So, uh, from the 300 grand that he gave us, we have purchased a side-by-side. We have purchased flock cameras. We have a drone that is unbelievable. Getting ready to buy body cams. We just put in a purchase order for, for, uh, 10 body cams.
Awesome.
To the tune of $80,000.
Awesome.
So, uh, also, mobile cams, new computers for the patrol vehicles. We, uh, we're, we're on the cutting edge of technology in Gates County for law enforcement, and I'm thrilled. And without Bill Ward looking out for us, wouldn't have happened. So, uh, I'm thrilled, uh, trying to think of anything else. We've, we've, we've done so much, and we've got so much new stuff. Uh, new weapons, uh, new weapon systems, uh, the computers, the mobile cam. That was very expensive. That mobile cam.
So I, I was gonna ask a question about that, and just, this is totally off-topic, y'all. Do you have any issues with accessing them in various parts of the county? Are there areas where it's, you can't?
Yeah, they're, they're good to go.
Okay.
And, and that, those, I think, with the computers and, and their, the hardware and everything that go in, I think that was a total, that was well over a hundred thousand dollars.
I imagine the officers were quite pleased, and your dispatchers.
The guys love them. They can pretty much sit anywhere in the county and access and do what they need to do, so. I'm gonna agree with that, so, thank you.
We've come a long ways in the last four years, Sheriff.
Oh, my goodness, yeah, I'm telling you. I'm just, I'm tickled to death with, with the, the deputies that we have now, and the largest law enforcement team that this county's ever had. And, uh, the technology to go along with that and to equip them with what they need, uh, is, is really special for the county.
If, could I ask maybe at some point in the future, after you get your cameras in place, and I'll maybe come back and give us a quick brief on the rules? Because I've heard a lot of people argue about depending upon states and localities, the accessibility of that camera. Some people demand access to cameras every other day in other locations. You can't get it without a court order and all. I'd like to understand if we have flexibility, what you're gonna be looking for us to try and endorse. Not asking you on the, on the spot today.
We're supposed to have the, uh, those delivered, if, if we get everything in squared away, by mid-November. And then there's gonna be a training, training period and everything for it, but, uh.
Yep.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right, so is there any other comments or discussions, question, um, in regard to these budget requests? Budget amendment request?
Just the last one, I, I saw Mr. Arnold's here. For the AIA stuff or, um, for that work, how close are we to being complete with our, um, inventory?
And we've got, um, he asked about the two AIA grants. I, I think from what I understand, we are very close to receiving reports this month, but you've got a water and a wastewater if you wanna.
Just, I'm not long for a long space, just wondering, are we like within a month or two of having a ready product for Brad to?
We are 100% complete, we have several components and resources.
I'm sorry, could you come to the mic so those at home could hear? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Uh, my name's Leo Green with Green Engineering. Um, to answer your question on the, the actual asset assessment and inventory of the water system and the sewer system, that is, those portions are 100% complete. We have prepared our report summary, submitted it to the state. The state has, has made some comments, wanted to see a little more detail in the report. And, uh, we are, uh, working on that now. And that, that should be back to the state, uh, by the end of the month. Um, and, and I think the, the actual milestone that the state mandated was, I think, December the 1st, I believe. But, but yes, all of that work is 100% complete, the, the asset database, the digital files with all your system components.
I'm really thinking more the graphic component, the GIS usable mapping.
Correct. That, that is correct. That is 100% complete.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
And what we will do, when, when that is, after the report is, is approved, part of the closing out that project is a, is a board presentation. And, and training of, of staff with the software, which our GIS, uh, staff member will, will perform.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna ask that he stay there if we're gonna roll the managers report.
We gotta go through these first, yeah. So, all right, any other questions, anyone else on the board? Any other, Mr. Forsyth? Okay, so if we can have a motion to approve the budget request as present, budget amendment request as presented.
Second.
All right, all in favor? A show of hands. That is unanimous. All right, thank you. And now we will move.
Sheriff, can we confirm that we are approving 14 for 18?
14, 15, 16, and 18. Was there a 17?
This would be FY 2021.
There's a 17. Okay. So, yes, so can we, do we have to vote, do we have to vote to amend that?
As presented, this is what is being presented.
Yes. Was as presented, yes, okay. All right, so now we will move into the county manager report.
In preparing for this meeting, I had had a discussion with Leo to get updated on the permitting progress on various projects. And as he talked me through it the other day, actually, he was driving, I got so excited. I said, I need you to put that in writing. I read it, and I said, I need you to come tell the board. Because the, the, the activity that's happening, um, the momentum that we have, and the enthusiasm I heard out of him, can only come from him. It can't come from me. So I'm gonna, Sheriff, first, we get his written.
So should we go ahead and invite Mr. Green back up to the podium? Join us again, please. Thank you. If we have a trace shortage, I am convinced that government is the reason at any point. I don't know, yeah, is, is.
Let's walk through your, uh, report.
As Scott had mentioned, he, he called the other day, and then we discussed kind of updates on, on all the existing current utility infrastructure projects. He wanted to know where we were, um, kind of what the schedules were. And so I, I put together, um, the, the summaries that you have in front of you. And I can, I can go through each one briefly, uh, if that's what you'd like to hear. Starting out, uh, with the, um, Honey Pot Road, uh, land application site. That project, um, is a SRF, uh, State Revolving Fund project. All the plans and specifications have been submitted, not only to the state for permitting, but the, the Division of Water Infrastructure also wants to review the plans and specifications, not for permitting purposes, but for completeness, to make sure that, 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 all the information contained in the specs meets their criteria. They issue, once that's reviewed, if they don't have any comments, or if they do, we'll address them. If they don't, they will issue what is called a PSL, Plan and Specification Approval Letter. That gives you the authority. Once you receive that, we can put an ad in the paper and bid the project. That will be followed by, and this kind of gets into why some of this feels like it's taking so long to, to, to get to the construction of, of this work. Once that Plan and Specification Approval Letter is issued, we go through the bid process. Once, once we take bids, there's a, there is a checklist that, that we prepare. It's the, the bid form, the, the, the resolution that you all will pass, half a dozen other, uh, the NDE certification documents that we prepare and send back to the state, to the Division of Water Infrastructure. They review those. And then they give us the authority to award. And part of that process is you will pass a resolution, um, and it's a resolution of tentative award. That's got to be in the package that goes back to the state. So that's, that's got to come before you guys, before the package goes back. And then, once they issue the authority to award, contracts are executed, project kicks off for construction. And that is the same process for every single project that you have on this sheet of paper. Every one separately. And that's, that's, that's just the way that, and for the SRF projects, of which you have three, the Honey Pot Road site and the two schools. After that project, we've gone through and, and got the authority to award, we also have to, uh, we will also have to go to the LGC.
That's correct. On those three projects, we will be running on a parallel track for the state to review, one, that our bids are within budget, and two, that we're gonna be able to meet our side of the, uh, the equip, of, of the equation. This is a, it goes to a joint legislative review committee, and this was a rule that was put in place either in 2000 or 2002. So we will be, uh, running that, uh, track parallel with, with the bidding. And that's just on the three SRF, because those all involve loan, project amounts for loans that when it's bundled together is over a million dollars, because each one of these projects was over a million. That you've got, you've got principal forgiveness on, on all of them, but when you, they don't look at just the principal forgiveness, they look at the entire, or the, the, the package. So we've got three, not three trips to the LGC, three, but three projects to the LGC.
So for the Buckland TS Cooper, what's our portion after the principal forgiveness? So if they're a million dollar each, what portion is it that we'll be financing that LGC will be concerned about?
Well, let's, let's talk about, um, did you say Cooper or Buckland?
Both, either, both of them, actually.
Okay, the, the Buckland, the total project is 1.3 million. I'm gonna have a summary here for you in a second, so you don't have to write it all down. The principal forgiveness is 326,000. The loan amount is 979. So the, the borrowing on that one loan, the, the part the county will pay back is 979. But they treat the entire project as, as a loan, because there's a, a principal forgiveness component.
Sure.
Above that is the TS Cooper. That's the largest one. It's $2.8 million. The principal forgiveness is $2 million. The loan amount is 816. On the wastewater treatment, it's $2.2 billion, total project, 1.5 million. Principal forgiveness, 718,000, uh, is the debt. All of these paybacks are on a 20-year amortization. Two of the loans are at 0% on the formula for the Buckland School. They went with a 1.037%. I've got a, um, summary down here for you where you can see our, um, gosh, so much for bifocals. Our, these projects, we won't start payment until six months after the project is completed. But if, let's just assume they were all completed at the same time, same year, six months out. The annual debt service combined for all three is $130,000.
Annually?
Annually, for 20 years. And that, um, interest amount.
You said zero interest?
Yeah, the, the interest amount is, uh, $104,000.
But you said zero interest.
Yeah, well, the one project is 1.037.
Okay.
That was the Buckland School.
Okay.
And, and the way we had programmed this was for these debt service monies, to be funded by your capital reserve, your school capital reserve program. Because if we tried to layer this debt onto the wastewater customers, right now we have Brad, seven or six customers? We have seven customers. That, that'd be a heck of a burden, and, and this is gonna have some, some, not countywide, but significant county impact. So you're spreading this using the, the capital reserve dollars. So you're spreading this using the capital reserve dollars. And as you may recall from budget time, there is one of the half-cent sales tax components, I think it's 44, if I'm not mistaken, William. Because 40, Article 40 and 42 are restricted for school debt and school capital. Article 44 can be used for schools, it can be used for community colleges, and it can be used for economic development. So these funds will qualify to help pay that debt.
So if one of those schools were closed, then we wouldn't be able to use the school fund part of it, correct?
No, you could, because you're using it really for economic development, for infrastructure. Let's just say it's TS Cooper. The line headed that direction and down 32 is really going to be critical for the village of Sunbury at some point, as an unsuared community. The forced main, I believe, is a four-inch forced main that we've designed, and we think that in addition to whatever activity happens at the school could accommodate that, and maybe some other development over time. But if, for example, that would be the school that was closed, if the county were to repurpose that facility, maybe sell it and someone develop it for senior apartments, which has been done in a number of communities.
Yeah, you're going- my question was just about closing the school park.
Yeah.
In previous meeting, I asked if it was four inch, and y'all said it was an eight inch, but now you're saying it's a four inch? That pipeline going to Sunbury? Four inch?
Four. It's a forced main, and we're pushing it back. And that's also the line that will be serving the new campground renovations at Murch's Mill Pond.
Now, I know the local government commission is going to review the bidding for the SRF, but what about the reviewing of the water infrastructure? Is the state going to review that also for the SRF?
Yes, yes. That is ongoing through the permitting process. We were in, we are in continuous dialogue on this.
Okay. All right.
I think he could touch on also the water tank. I think the water tank- oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll hit all the-
Yeah, roll ahead.
If you'd like to hear it.
Yeah, please, this is good news.
Okay. The next project, it was actually four separate projects, but we felt like from economies of scale standpoint, since it was all waterline work, let's bid them all together. And you'll notice with the, that's what we're calling the Gates County Water System Improvements Project. We've bid it as one contract with four parts. It's actually being funded out of two piles of money, the SRPD 134, 153, money that you got, and the 134, 154 money you got. Anyhow, the four parts are the Vennett's Creek Crossing and Waterman Extension right down here. There's a gap in your system. That will be closed. It'll be a directional bore under Vennett's Creek with the line extension down. I think to the first home on the left, where we'll connect to the existing county water. Same thing on Carter's Road. I think, I believe, years ago, maybe there was a leak under Tropin Creek. And instead of addressing the leak at the time, it was just valved off on either side. We're going to reconnect that gap in your system. What we're calling the Gatesful Transmission, that's coming from, I believe, 37 and 158 down through town and over to the Ashton Lewis Mill. And then the Highway 158 improvements, that will be a 12-inch line extension on 158 from currently where the 12-inch line stops out and will terminate at the, in your, in the-
Murch's Commerce.
Park. That's those four projects. Well, it's one project, but four parts. Those plans have been submitted to the state for permitting. They are under review. And those plans have been submitted to the Division of Water Infrastructure for the approval of the plans and specifications. So hopefully that'll run concurrently, and then we'll bid that work. The Transmission Main is also the project where we required, we got two easements across some properties here in town. And that project is on the state's milestone schedule. They, each one of these projects was given a schedule by the state when you received your letter of intent to fund for these projects. And currently, we are on and we're ahead of those schedules. I'll hit the next two projects together. That's the Buckland School and the TS Cooper School. Those plans are about 90% complete. We're getting the electrical engineering completed. And those are due to the state for permitting and plan and spec approval on December the 1st. And we'll meet at that date. The next project ongoing is the 300, the new 300,000 gallon elevated water storage tank. Part of the work that was done under the AIA monies that you got, it was a hydraulic modeling section. Not part of the assessment work that we were doing, that we spoke of earlier, but another part to that funding. And we are just about complete with that. That's been time-consuming and really hands-on with staff and us and other consultants. But the modeling efforts showed, as we focused on tank locations, the existing tank site, I mean, we kind of would go to record. And so the intent there is to erect, is to tear down the existing tank, demolish the existing tank, and go back kind of right beside it, in the center of the lot, but on the back of the lot, with the new 300,000 gallon elevated storage tank. We have signed a contract with the geotechnical engineer that we use for this type of work, which is SNME, out of, we're working with a group out of Raleigh. They will be here by the, talk with them today, they'll be here by the first week of November to do their subsurface exploration, which will be used for the foundation design. Once that's done, plans and specs for permitting and for approval, then we bid the work and go through the authority to award process, and then award it and erect the tank. I'll get to the next one in a second. But all of those projects we've talked about, you will, by the, I'm going to say by June of next year, you ought to be able to see all of those projects under contract and with starting construction sometime mid-year. I believe by the time all of that's done and the contracts are executed, and, you know, the tank might be delayed a little bit, you know, because that's the material that's required, but it'll be a lot of work starting next year. Some of these, maybe with the Honey Pot Road project, we might be in a position to advertise that before the end of the year for construction. I think the other ones, you're looking very first of the year with advertisements and starting that process.
So a lot of these are on the hurry-up-and-wait-on-the-state? A lot of these are on the hurry-up-and-wait-on-the-state piece of the equation, or?
Well, yes and no. But I was taking these notes, just to give you an idea of the, in these milestone days, and they're on the, on your letters. You know, each one of these projects required an engineering report to be provided. From the date that we submitted the engineering report, this is in their schedule, to the date they're required to give us approval, is five months. On the bid package, plan and specs, they have four months to review. Sometimes it doesn't take all four, you know, all that time, sometimes it takes that much or more. And then on the authority to award, we're seeing one to two months. So that's 10 to 11 months in review. I mean, could be. Typically, that's the worst case, and we're seeing the authorities to award on the non-LGC projects, the non-SRF projects. We're seeing that happen pretty fast. So 30, 45 days. So yes, there is, you know, there is some review time. But I think the good news is that most all of these will be hopefully under contract by middle of next year. Some, you know, and they're going to stagger a little bit, but that's what we're projecting. And the last project, we talked about, Rodney talked about this a good bit at the last meeting, and you've been to the meetings with Dr. Spruill. We are awaiting Richard, Dr. Spruill's proposal to us for this work. And we expect that, I'm going to say any day now. And with that, the first part of that project will be to go out 8,000, 10,000 feet from your existing well field and look for locations for potential well sites. Once several are identified, and obviously we'll have to meet with the property owner, get options to form a test well, and if that test well is successful, to take the next step, which is another SRF-funded project for your production wells. I think you've got two-plus million dollars for two production wells. But the test wells need to be done first. So that search for those properties will be starting soon, once we get information back from Richard and get under contract with them. And I think lastly, we have talked about a pilot study on the treatment options. Spoke earlier with Mr. Berryman. We are getting proposal for pilot studies that will include reverse osmosis, bone char carbon, which is good at the removal of fluoride, and I think an ion exchange system. I can't go into too much depth about the science and the technology behind that, but we will be running concurrently three different treatment options. And once the results are in, then we'll be able to sit down and evaluate what's going to be the most productive, most cost-effective option for the county. And there'll be a lot of variables that play into that, you know. We've talked about the discharge with the RO. You might not have that with some of the others. There are some other disposal costs with the media. But all of that will be evaluated once the pilot test is complete.
Am I correct in remembering that it was mentioned January for the pilot test, that we were after somebody, am I correct in remembering that it would be January for the pilot test we're looking at? Is that right? That somebody-
Before we start it?
Before we start it. Was that-
It will be no later than January.
No later than January, okay.
No later than January.
Okay.
And I think, I think probably a little bit before that, when we were maybe just talking about the RO, because I believe that they've got a pilot unit over in Camden County, is my understanding. But again, Rodney's working with the group that's going to provide us that proposal on the three options. And if that's something the board wants to look at before we take off with it, I mean, the last thing, the last thing we want to have happen is come in here two or three months after the pilot is in process, and somebody says, "Well, hold on, this is not what we thought." So I think we'll absolutely share that scope with you guys.
I think, yeah, I think any kind of update like that would be appreciated by the majority here.
Yeah, we'll do that, once we get the proposal and prior to sound, but notice to perceive that, I got to make sure everybody's on board with the path we're going to take.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you, sir. Do we have any other questions, comments, Mr. Green?
No.
Okay.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll turn back to county manager.
Next is our first quarter financial report. I think you last saw one of these in March. But we're into the new fiscal year, and William has compiled all the data through the end of September by cost center or department level on the expenditure side. And we always have to bear in mind, in terms of cash flow for property taxes, the bills go out in August, they're due in September, but most folks don't pay till either after Christmas or right before January 6th, when the interest kicks in, so that you can earn interest on your money before the county does. So we are thankfully able to cash flow our operation due to the board's work with maintaining a strong fund balance. You will see, as we've talked about, school construction using lottery money in the column down at the bottom on the front page, we have some outflow for the TS Cooper Elementary, the Gates Elementary, still some for the high school, and then also the Buckland Elementary. So while that cash looks really high at 16 million, by the time we pay out those school construction obligations, we'll be on target at right around 13 million. On the backside, you have the Gitz Fund, which operates as an enterprise, your water and sewer, and your landfill. Again, we'll do this again quarterly. And of course, if you have questions tonight, I think William's prepared, but if you want to marinate on this, and we can come back to some of them, we can certainly do that at any time the board pleases.
All right. I'll ask if anybody has any questions or comments now?
And we will make this available. There's copies here for the public, and we will put this on our website, so folks can pull it down and look at it at home. We are fast and furious into the audit work. And I say "we," it's a "we," he. He has sent, I believe, everything on the task list to the auditors. We will be awaiting their initial review, so that I have something to work with for the management discussion and analysis. A lot of that will fall in the category of a report I shared with the board a few weeks ago, our distressed unit for water and wastewater. That supplemental report has to be attached with all of these projects when they go to Raleigh for review. And that gives a timeline of the board's approvals for project ordinances, for engineering contracts, and, but all of that is flowing, so that we will meet our December 31 goal on the audit. I'm not saying that's going to be easy. William's already highlighted for me a couple of things we might have to have discussions with, and it's important that you all understand. We've got $17 million of capital projects going on. And the auditors are always looking for what they can qualify as construction in progress. Well, the AIA studies, those are not construction, those are building a database. And all of the project work that Mr. Green just described is on the soft side with the engineering work. None of that work can be capitalized. You know, we've spent money, but that, the auditors, though, tend to want to capitalize that, because when the project is over, they will value the entire project. The construction cost plus the cost of planning and engineering. But we know there's going to be some back and forth on that, as there was last year on the inventory. And I think we mentioned to you earlier in a report, the unassigned fund balance for the audit you received for '24 was understated by almost $400,000, because they had restricted monies for the DSS loan payment, which had been retired in '23. But they picked it up, and so we will try to have that adjusted for you.
So what was that percentage, though, after they corrected it? What was our percentage fund balance?
It's still the same percentage fund balance in terms of availability to appropriate, but it's the-
It's a number, I'm asking. Is the number, I'm asking, not is it unchanged? What's the number percentage-wise for us?
Both of our last two audits had fund balances available for appropriation over 30%.
Okay.
And I believe when y'all came on and went to your training last January, we sent you '22 and '23, and then you got '24, and they're all within that 30% range.
Okay. That's a good answer, yeah.
Couple of, I'm sorry, it's not a percentage. They're both north of 30, and I can send you the worksheets on those. They're a page in your own.
I wanna say 32% for some reason.
Yeah. I was just saying, after the correction, I wanted to know, post their correction, whether they're saying we have, not what we say we have.
You and Jim 30, these are unaudited numbers, subject to be adjusted by the auditors. But on your general fund, revenue exceeded expenditures by $553,000. You're half a million dollars to the good. Percentage-wise, on your, what we spent was what was 16.1 million. That's about a 3.4% gain. When you consider the fact that the budget had an appropriated fund balance of $711,000 that we expected to use if no other revenues came in above our cost savings, so we had a swing of about a $1.2 million. Good news for the board, and good news to your work. The GITS fund, we had revenue exceed expenditures by $20,300. The landfill fund, the convenience centers and our portion of the transfer station, unfortunately had a shortfall of $123,000. And that's 10 and 1/2%. The last few years, we've been breaking even and a little bit better. But this is the first time in many, many years that I've seen any report of a shortfall. I don't know when the board last considered adjustments to the fee structure. I believe right now, for most households, it's $240 annually attached to their tax bill, which is $20 a month. But like all enterprises, costs have gone up. But that's one where we hit a hole. On the public utilities enterprise, we would have been in the black, but we used $179,000 toward projects. When we submitted applications to the LGC, we had to pay certain amounts of fees. That total for fees and debt service, I wanna get to that, was $179,000. We ended up, excuse me, 140, let me read this. We had $142,000 for application fees and debt service, $42,640, for a total of $179,000 that we used to cover project costs. That put us in the black for the fund for about $150,000. But had we not accelerated our debt payment on the lead service line and had to pay those expenses for these permit applications, we would have been well into the black. The lead service line project, and that was primarily the Gatesville area, where we had to examine all of those connections for lead solder. That project was initially funded at $328,000. Two-thirds of that was a loan from the state payable over five years. Our cost total project was only $111,000. So our loan and our grant were both trimmed back. When it came time to pay the bill, the state required us, the treasurer's office, to pay the original promissory note for that first payment. So instead of paying the narrowed-down version, we paid a full $42,000 or $43,000 for that. We have budgeted for this year to pay off all the debt for that project. And that is in your sheet that's got the, sorry to say, the Carolina blue stripes. But on the next page, top of page two, you'll see we had initially had financing for $213,000, principal forgiveness for $114,000. Since the project came in at 111, our loan was cut from $213,000 to $72,000, and our grant was cut from $114,000 to $38,000. We will have both of those debt obligations paid off in the current fiscal year.
Is that just for the investigation, or is that actually land replacement as well?
That's just the investigation. And they did not find any lead solder. So that was good news for the town of Gatesville. I mentioned the distressed unit report. That has been completed. We will be scheduling a preview meeting with the local government commission staff to review those three SRF projects and work to get on the LGC's calendar, most likely in January. They only meet once a month. And I would like to touch just real briefly on the strategic plan because I think if there's a culprit, it's me. Because there was some talk and discussion with the board about feedback that the county received from Bill Ward and Senator Hennig about where we wanna take Gates County, and whether it's a school or economic development. I think we were advised, you need a plan. And shortly after that, I shared the Granville County plan digitally in an email to the board. I think there might have been one other that was a link, but I had the full-blown copy of the plan they did in Granville. It took a couple of years for them to put that together because it does take guidance, direction, and priorities from the governing body. And it does need to have a fairly, losing my thesaurus tonight, a strong public participation component. And when the strategic planning course came up at the School of Government, I had shared that with the chair. There was some mention of it at a work session because I recall Commissioner Roundtree had indicated he wanted to go, but then I think had a schedule conflict. But what we are working toward is having a work group that can help do the legwork for this governing body as this process evolves. So my hope, and I think from the reports I've had, there is an enthusiastic team, broad-based. And I'm so thankful that school member Riddick was willing to go to the dark side and play with the county and to be an important part of this conversation. So we are at the very, very early stages of building a foundation, having strong guidance and direction from the governing body, and hopefully having a very lively and engaging process for as many segments of the population as we can. But certainly, I can't think of a more important part than the schools or, of course, economic development. But those two usually go hand-in-hand when you pick up anybody's strategic plan. And economic development and education are gonna be right at the forefront. So bear with us if we got a little rough start. And I sure hope and pray that our colleague Willie is doing much better at this hour than he was early. But we are juggling a lot at this time. We're trying to advance the ball. And again, we've got some exciting things happening. And that's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're gonna move into commissioner updates. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Forsyth and Mark Brown.
Goodie. So since when I make a comment, it seems like I always end up getting staff to give commentary about stuff afterwards. Let me go into strategic plan again, since it's brought up again. I was gonna let it go that the employees are doing. Again, I think what you're doing, you know, board member Riddick, I think that's great. I really do. There's no doubt about that, and nobody's questioned that. But again, the process going forward, I remember having these discussions, and I keep hearing these alluding to things that we sorta kinda mentioned it here, and we've done this. And I'm just used to a more established, open procedure where as a board, we meet and make it publicly available, we're gonna consider strategic plans, and as a group, we give our leadership. So there's no doubt about it where there's a good group working out there. The fact that you want public input, there's no doubt about that. Nobody's arguing that. It just simply seems strange to me, the way this happened was that, oh, yeah, it's being worked on, here's a report. And truthfully, yeah, okay, well, this is a training class. And yes, some people were asked by the chairman and maybe the county manager to participate. And it just seems like it's a little haphazard to me. Sort of like, if you're in the know, then you get to participate. And if you're not in the know, you don't. So I wanna say about the water projects. I was actually pretty impressed, again, tonight with some of the feedback, the dollar explanations about the pipelines and how much money that is and the impact. I still don't necessarily agree of building a pipeline to Sunbury that was argued and justified. And when the state reviews your grant, they'll say, "Hey, you argued to get this money to build a pipeline to a school." And when they go to review a design, they look at the scope. And if your scope originally said it was to a school, and if we're saying maybe that school's not being built or not being functioned, I question whether they'll really approve it. But that's something for down the road. But the finances of all of it looks good. I did wanna say, though, while there's some good stuff that came from our green engineering that came here, I just wanna point out again, we're gonna do an evaluation of options and pilot studies. And I'm getting the distinct idea that the guidance that we were told last time, again, we talked about that .7. And so I wanna share with each of the board members here, there's something, direct information concerning cleanup levels and removing fluoride from your water and the appropriate level. And then the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, that .7 level that we talked about, that we now have our consultant going forward, they're gonna price out a treatment system that's gonna be based upon removing fluoride down to the .7 milligrams per liter level. And I'm predicting now, and I hope I'm wrong, is that they're gonna come in and tell us, "Oh, a treatment process is too expensive to get it down to .7." And y'all can read this at your leisure, but it gives you the two. One is a, if you're adding fluoride, what the health department says is the maximum you should put in, which is .7, that's not a cleanup level. And so if we start talking about and estimating the cost of building a treatment train that only is gonna go all the way down to .7, it's gonna be tremendously more expensive. So I just wanna point that out. That's information for y'all to look at later. It's easily pulled from NC Department of Environmental Quality and from the North Carolina Department of Health and, was it Health and Human Services? There's numbers. So this is backup that, again, I think we might be trying to, we're gonna put a standard in place that's not achievable if we go to .7. But that's just for reconsideration. So just wanted to share those with you. Again, from my estimation, it could make the cost of treatment that they would come in and say it's gonna cost us is like 300% of what it might likely be. So keep that in mind. So I also wanna point out that, I wanna read this because I wanted to try and be succinct. "I also believe it's a good practice and recommended for most governmental organizations, as I shared with the board members last time, of using contracted architect and engineering firms that competition is good and healthy, ensures public confidence and competition. And for this reason, I believe Gates County should move towards sharing of the wealth or truly evaluating using other experts vice having all of our grant-funded projects buried into a single contractor. And we seem to try way too hard to make them look good versus getting a good product." I'm not saying we aren't getting a good product, but I've never been to a place where we have 12 or 13 projects all going to one consultant. It's problematic for me mentally. I probably have four consultants working for me on given projects at any given time. And I'm just not used to seeing one guy doing everything. I feel like we're bought into trying to make them successful. So I just wanna point that out. As far as school board issues, I'm really glad that the issues that the school board was having with their construction work, that that's been resolved. And I gotta say, I think it's unfortunate that our commissioner chairperson had to take such an active and repeated role in engaging the state regulatory agency to resolve the school board's problem, and one that was apparently a result of the school board moving forward on these projects. I could be wrong, but it was without DTI approval. Next, I'm alarmed that the study we requested the school board to perform to assess the need for reduction of number of schools has still not been released. We were told six months ago it would be done in September. But now September's passed and half of October, and I've heard no updates. I don't know if any of y'all have, but I haven't. And so I grow suspicious when a handpicked consultant by the school board superintendent is delaying so long and presenting results of his independent study and we aren't hearing anything, especially when it's critical to future use and what we're gonna need to do. That's bothersome. If you look at the school systems around us, lots of them are doing downsizing. I share stuff periodically on Facebook with counties and cities all around is downsizing. It's not unreasonable. It's something they should be doing. And again, that's why I'm concerned about us voting on the tax to go forward. It gives the message that, well, we're gonna fund anything. And I don't think we should be giving that message. We should be saying, "Show us that you have skin in the game. You're gonna make hard decisions, and at that point, we'll support you." And I just wanna point out that, you know, in the past, when they've had difficulties, they, just a couple of years ago, they came in and asked the school board to come up with $800,000 to cover mid-year overruns. And so my confidence level is not high with that. Along with that, I wanna talk about moral high ground. It's humorous to me, and I'm gonna say that for noting concerns about governmental operations or school issues, for someone to be publicly criticized by individuals who, in my opinion, have abused their authority or cry about imagined offenses, it's pretty obnoxious, but I'm getting tougher skin. But it's now becoming publicly obvious that many of the disgruntled activists within our organizations of Gates County, Gates County Schools, and former members are actively engaging and calling employers of people who make criticism of the status quo. I'm very aware of two such instances. The fact that they take action to impact individuals' personal work life who dare to speak out against clear favoritism or revealing things is both sad and funny at the same time. This time of victimhood and special privileges is now raging wide in Gates County. That kind of behavior should be an obvious indicator of the threat those individuals see to anyone who sheds a light on their behavior and methods. They feel the status quo must be preserved. Formalities are far more important than performance. I could go into more details, and I will if necessary later. Now, on to other things, positives. The Fall Festival, I went out to the Fall Festival. My wife participated in a PTA booth, but I spent some time just walking around, talking to various folks. Got some real good comments from people about the wings on in Gates County, loving the festival. Had some visitors to the county that were surprised. One or two people that were looking for homes and concerned about being able to find houses. That was good information. The weather was real nice. I think it's a good thing. I wish there'd been more people. Wasn't quite as many as last year, but still a pretty good turnout. Saw some other folks there. Our chairperson's family, I saw your husband there. Pretty nice to see people out. Albemarle Commission. With the federal shutdown, the Albemarle Commission, some people are worried about, are they gonna be able to do the things they do? And they're still continuing on. As far as like, let's see, the threat to impact, I put down here, the threat of impact to their services is pretty limited because most of the stuff they do is on a reimbursable basis. Community development portion of their operations is state-funded programs, so there's no real threat or impact due to the federal shutdown. And that's for things like housing, if you know about it. So right now, there's the 2026 Urgent Repair Program for homes. And if you make 50% or less of the median income for the state, you can apply for repairs. They accept applications from the first through the 15th of the month. And the number to call is (252) 426-5753, extension 7096. And the Albemarle Commission's doing this for all the counties. I think with the exception of Gates, we do some portion of the housing stuff ourselves. But all the other 10 counties reach out. Their housing director's really good, very willing to talk to people if anybody wants to try and get some help with urgent repairs if you're financially, shall we say, challenged. The other thing, their aging, Agency on Aging has a fund balance that's gonna allow them to keep work. And so there shouldn't be concerns of any of the stuff they do for the aging population. And then the Workforce Development Program, that's sort of the jobs and training, et cetera. That also has sufficient funds for them to last at least another three or four months. So if anybody's had concerns about Albemarle Commission's functions they do, they seem pretty sound, and it shouldn't be an issue. Next item, county staffing issues. Feel compelled to point out that I was called by a couple of individuals, one a spouse who said that, "Hey, my husband and three other staff have quit the water department. They're down to just three or four people. We're upset, and we don't like the environment." And again, being open, not trying to trash anybody, don't know. Every time somebody quits, there's always disgruntled people that may or may not have a bone, axe to grind or a bone to chew on. But I think it's worthwhile to note that if you really are challenged down to just four employees or something, getting repairs done, leaks repaired. Again, I'd like to urge that you make use of the, what this board voted for, to use a contractor to catch up and get all the leaks repaired because that's critical to us not losing water. Again, once we get the water lines that are leaking horribly fixed and completely down, that'll minimize how much water... that are leaking horribly fixed and completely down, that'll minimize how much water we have to treat to deal with the fluoride level. So Community Center, I've been very vocal about the Community Center, about some of the things, the bathrooms, I've gone to football games, I've gone to other soccer games and stuff out there, and the county was pretty quick to respond, Community Center staff did, and cleaning those up, it seems like you're doing a better, a better job, path raking of leaves and sticks and all, seems like we're getting some, some performance improvements there, which I'm glad to see, but the thing that disturbed me was this Friday night at a football game, you go to use the bathroom, and right in the concession stand, I worked in the concession stand as a band booster parent, and the bathrooms right behind it are locked up, and you have to go all the way to the fieldhouse to get the bathrooms, and I realize those bathrooms are operated by the Community Center, and football games are run by the high school, but it seems kind of silly that we can't coordinate between our Community Center and the school, that bathrooms that are right there can't be open for a football game, you know, it's just, it just seems really silly that we can't do at least that, how hard could it be for two of our parts of the county to work together to just have two convenient bathrooms open? So I really think we need to work on some of those things, it's kind of sad, I go to other counties and I just don't see that happening. So the last thing I'd like to say is, several people have asked about, you know, performing on boards, they've been less than thrilled about doing it, they've given me some feedback of, I don't want to be bothered, so these people that volunteered tonight, it was thrilling to see highly qualified people agreeing to do this, I was coming in going to whine about not being able to get people to do this, and I'm actually thrilled now instead of walking out here, total 180 on that, so with that, that's all I have at this point.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Roundtree?
Yes, speaking to Gates County constituents, update for Alamooral Regional Health Services, Fall '25 District Tour, Mini Clinical, it's going to take place Wednesday, October the 22nd, it's going to be at the Gates County Health Department at 1:00 PM. Update for Gates County Social Service Department, Gates County DSS, we held their trunk and treat, Safe Holiday Family Fund, Community Halloween Event on October the 30th, from 5:30 PM till 7:00, this is going to take place at the DSS office, that's Gates County DSS, 1212 Main Street, Gatesville. Also, digital skills information sessions are available at the Gates County Public Library, that's located at 14 Cypress Creek, Gatesville, Cypress Creek Drive, excuse me, Gatesville, North Carolina, it's going to have sessions offered, and a session that's going to be offered tomorrow, Smartphone Basics, it's October the 16th, and Microsoft Works and Google Drive, that's going to take place on October 23rd. All sessions will be from 10:30 AM until 12:30 PM. For additional information, you can sign up by calling (252) 357-0110. Also, update for Gates County, excuse me, also update for November 19th, the Honorable North Carolina Secretary of State Elaine Marshall will be here, she's going to be presenting her initiative, Ruralize NC, Ruralize NC, it's an initiative where entrepreneurs, startups, innovators, basically small businesses, are provided resources from the state and also some federal resources. It's an effort to maintain and to provide resources for small business to keep, to retain small business in Gates County, such things such as mentoring, networking, back office functions, establishing credit worthiness, all these things are going to be offered to the small businesses, when she give her initiative here at a courthouse during our commission board meeting at 6:00, she's on the agenda, so it's going to be very informative, she's going to bring her team, and it's going to be a great opportunity for small businesses in Gates County. And that concludes my updates for tonight.
Thank you, sir, my share.
All right, well, first of all, thank you all for coming out tonight, it's good to see a crowd and audience, I've got a 911 advisory board meeting on the 23rd, we were talking about strategic planning and looking forward, enjoyed what y'all have done so far, I saw the little Facebook post where y'all took pictures when y'all ate at training, looked like it was a good time, but something they said within one of their slogans, a better community, and that's what it's all about, that's why we sit up here on this board, so we can have a better community for our citizens. Community Center, RFQ, that excites me, we've been talking about this ever since I've been on this board, I did go on the roof one cold December morning, actually with these boots on, and that was not the right idea, but it is in bad shape, we had some of the veneer brick on it, cinder block wall, it was, used to be a layer of insulation, and then a brick veneer to pretty it up, well, they did a thermal study somewhere along the line, and all the insulation's wet and drooped down, moldy, it's, it's, it's bad. Now the water goes in to, the cinder block walls on the inside absorb them, and that's why all the paint peels off, but, so, in the past, I don't know why, we didn't, I say we, because I'm on the board and I did do our due diligence of upkeep of that building, and I'm not going to say it's beyond just repair, but spend millions on an older building like that, I'd rather build a new one, you know, not saying we couldn't convert that into something, or just get rid of it, who knows, but I am excited to see RFQ going out, because we have talked about it for a long time. Water, wastewater projects, that's another thing that's been ongoing, glad to see them come to fruition, it's been, it's been a lot. After all, what Commissioner Forsyth said about the appointments of people tonight on the boards, that's what I had gotten until this week, and then all of a sudden, the last three days, I've had, I know at least five people call me, so I said, get application, please, so I'm glad to see the community stepping out, and the ones that signed up for and got appointed tonight, thank you all, thank you all. And then I thank you to the chair, county manager, and team for helping with the school project funding sorting, I wanted to be on the call, I know there was a lot of behind-the-scenes work on it, and I appreciate taking the charge on that to help get, we're a team, school system, us, the county, bathrooms, we can all work that little stuff out, it's, we're all part of a team, and it takes the whole team to make us go in the right direction, so we've got the ball rolling, let's keep the ball moving, that's all.
All right, Commissioner Barrow?
Earlier on in the month, and first of all, again, thank you for everyone coming out tonight, everybody watching on YouTube land and all that kind of good stuff, so thank you all very much. Earlier this month, I was contacted by several residents talking about some zoning and all that kind of good stuff with the Wellington Road area, I want to thank county manager for putting together a very detailed explanation of the zoning process and how it was followed, and to the T, and I appreciate that, a lot of work was put together to put up, bring all that information forward and bring it to light, and then it may present opportunities for others to do something like that, if they choose to do that with their property, so thank you very much for putting that together, I know it was a lot of hard work.
Again, that was a we, she effort.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Lisa.
It was a team effort, but she did the heavy lifting.
Yep, so thank you very much for doing that, I'm sending that out to the more interested individuals that would like to see that, so with that, it may be some opportunities there for people to, you know, we've been talking about housing and what people need as far as affordable housing in the county, and that may present an opportunity for people in the future in that area, so. The Planning Board, I think that's absolutely fantastic things to do, yeah, you know, we can say that we could have shut it and liked to have heard more about it before we'd done that, and, but at the end of the day, that is the direction of the county, and that's what we need to be doing, we need to be putting a plan forward of the future for this county, and making sure that we get good feedback and input from the citizens and concerned folks within the county that's trying to make a difference, that's trying to make the county better. When we went to the State Assembly and sat down with them and told them about all the needs that we have here in the county, the county just doesn't have the finances to be able to do a lot of the things that our citizens would like to see done, and so we have to go to our state legislature and ask for that money, we have to go to our state representatives in Congress and ask for that money to be able to bring those type of funds back to Gates County, and you can't do that unless you have a plan in place, this is what we're planning on doing, so that way, those representatives can take that document and wave it around in the halls where laws are made and passed and the funding is available to us, so that way, they can get some support from their other colleagues to be able to bring monies to a small county like Gates County, and so that we, that way we don't get forgotten when everybody else is getting monies sent to them, and so we have a pretty big ask out there for our legislators to be able to bring some additional funds for utility development within the county, because one of the biggest things that I get asked a lot by lifelong residents within the county is, why can't we have more here in the county as far as business development, commerce, and those type of things, well, the biggest hindrance that we have as a county is the fact that we don't have that developed utility system like other counties do, and so we're competing with that, and in order to have those type of things, we have to be able to piggyback on where we can get funding on those type of projects, and put a sanitary system within the county that could possibly be used to bring commerce to the county is a good thing, and so we're, over the next few years, we'll be able to put more and more emphasis into that and be able to get some funding for it and to be able to develop that a little bit more, we're developing our water systems, you know, there's $10 million that's going to get invested into that over the course of the next few years, I appreciate the update that we got from Green Engineering on where they're at, yes, I am one of those guys that go, why ain't we farther along, so, and county manager Sauer says, it's not the way it is in the public life, Nathan, so he has to rein me back on that from time to time, but that's okay, so I appreciate that, but the development of the utilities in the county is a big push that we have as a board, and so we want to continue to start pushing that, continue to push down that road. There's been a lot of discussion as far as, hey, where we stand with the Merchants Commerce Center, and yes, we do have some preliminary studies that's out there, I'm still reading and digesting them myself exactly what they mean, we do need to have a meeting, I've been waiting for us to have some additional members on that, so I was glad to see that Ms. Riva put her name in the hat for that, so we can continue on down that road, we'll look a little bit further as far as making sure that we have all the committees that we need, and not too many to overlap some areas, and we'll deal with that, but as far as the Commerce Center in and of itself, you know, the first, I would think, project that will probably go there would be the Community Center and building that out there, there are some discussions as far as the feasibility of a public-private alternative-type grocery store to kind of go out there to better support the needs of the county, but we also are struggling with how do we come up with the funding for that, and is it financially feasible to build it, and then can it maintain itself, and so that is all within the study as far as what other localities have done, they've got at least three or four examples in the study of what other localities have done, so we want to learn from what other folks have done, and what worked for them and what didn't work, so we don't repeat their mistakes. There's also talk as far as, in the study, as far as like a multi-purpose facility to continue to use that area back there for the citizens of Gates County, to draw in people to the center of the county, so that way, it may be something that other businesses may say, hey, this is a good influx of where people are at, so it may be a good place for me to put a business here of some sort, so we are looking into that as far as what we could possibly do there, so well, once we get to a point where we are ready to present that out to the public and get other thoughts and more feedback as far as the ideas that's kind of being batted around, we will do that, it's probably going to be more next year before we're ready for anything like that to be put out there, just because we want to be able to fine-tune some of the things that Summit has sent to us, so I think there's some pretty good ideas that's in that feasibility study that they have sent us, and that will all be made available in the near future, once we're ready to be able to present that in a coherent fashion, so that's.
I'm just going to ask you to tell them the number that you asked for, that big number when we went to meet with our legislator, he said we have a big ask out there, so.
Yeah, it's $100 million over the next five years, which, you know, if you think about it, and you put it in perspective as far as the price of construction these days, there's a new school that's being built right now in Past Lake County, Proquinn County.
Proquinn County.
Proquinn County.
And Camden.
And Camden, yeah, it's still in.
That's $60 million just for that school.
Yeah.
Buildings like that these days is not inexpensive by no means.
And it was encouraging to see that he didn't really blink, he just said we need to come back with a plan on paper.
Yeah, and they gave us good feedback, good constructive feedback as far as what we can do as a county to be able to obtain those funds.
Yeah.
Because when you go and you start asking for that type of money for those type of buildings, as well as, there's additional needs that we have as far as our water systems that we have, you know, we had the presentation about the fluoride and what do we need to do there, well, that's going to require us to have a new water treatment facility, a true water treatment facility, not just a pump house, because that's basically what we have now, is we pump our water out of ground, we put a little bit of fluoride in it, so that way we can treat our water that way, but that's it, it just pumps it into the county system, and then we go from there, because we're very lucky here in Gates County, we don't have very many suspended solids within our water, and it's very clean water, it's just that we have fluoride that occurs naturally where we need to be able to pump it from, and so we'll move forward with that, and that will be taken care of in due time, but that's all part of it, it's infrastructure that we got to have within the county, and so it's going to require us probably to build a new water treatment plant, and they're not inexpensive either, and so I'm looking forward to the next few years sitting on this board and what kind of good things that we do for this county, so, thank you.
All right, so again, best addressing, and I was going to say this later, but we actually, part of my chair update today was going to say, we have heard communication today from the chair of the school board, and the consolidation study will be presented on November 5th at the Mill Pond at 1:00 PM. So November 5th, 1:00 PM, Merchants Mill Pond, just found out, or it would have been sent out already, to you all, so with that there, I'm going to go ahead and begin by saying thank you to the people of Gates County for great support and trust that you continue to show to the Board of Commissioners and the county staff, every conversation, every question, every act of kindness reminds me just how special this community is, Gates County isn't just where we live, it's home. Over the past several months, I've had the opportunity to hear from many of our citizens, and also from many of our county employees, what I've heard has been honest, sometimes difficult, but always important feedback. Recently, many staff members have shared concerns about the workplace environment and the challenges they faced in feeling comfortable bringing forward ideas, needs, or in feedback, some have expressed that the tone and interactions they've experienced have left them discouraged and uncertain about their future here. I want our staff to know that you're seen, you're valued, and you are heard, the service you provide this county, often quietly and without recognition, is what keeps our operations moving and our community strong. I also want to be very clear that a divided or contentious board does more than create tension. tension within our walls. It sends a message outward. When potential businesses, families or investors look at a county, they look at its leadership. They look for stability, professionalism and a spirit of unity, not to say we can't disagree. When we allow conflict to overshadow collaboration, we make Gates County less attractive for growth, economic development and opportunity. Our actions as a board directly influence whether people choose to invest here, work here and call this place home. As leaders, we have a shared responsibility to ensure our work environment and the tone we set publicly reflects mutual respect, open communication and collaboration. A healthy organization and a healthy community cannot thrive in the midst of fear or division. My commitment moving forward is to continue listening and to support our employees and to help foster a culture where every voice, whether from this board or from our staff, can be heard with dignity and respect. Because when we work together, truly together, Gates County is stronger for it. Since our last meeting on September 17th, it's been pretty busy. We've had the Fall Festival, we've had National Night Out, and I agree, it was great to see so many from the community out at both events. I much appreciate our Sheriff's Office for moving National Night Out from August to October, which at first I was frustrated because it's always been in October, but it was a much cooler, much nicer night than they have been in August the past few years. So, thank you to the Sheriff and then to Gates Community, I think, community events for doing that. I also recently attended the NCACC Board of Directors Meeting. We had leaders across the state came together, discussed shared priorities, legislative updates and how we can better serve our citizens at the local level. One of the key highlights from that meeting was an update on President Wallace Nelson's Presidential Initiative, NC County's Care Access Within Reach. And I do want to share a little bit about this because President Nelson with the Association is also Chair Commissioner Nelson in Perquament County. He's our neighbor. Rural is his heart. So, this initiative is going to focus on improving access to health care across North Carolina with a special emphasis on the needs of rural and underserved communities, places like ours. He's a lifelong Perquament County resident, a pharmacist, and he just spoke firsthand to the various issues that we face here in this area. And over the past 15 years, since 2010, eight rural hospitals have closed across the state and more than 140 pharmacies have shut their doors since early last year. As President Nelson had said, it's not just a revenue issue, bottom line, it's a barrier to health care, it's a life issue. So, this message hits home to Gates County. We've been deemed a medical desert. We have, we have no medical care here and we greatly rely on our, on our rescue squad to move, move, to get us where we can receive that care, as we saw firsthand tonight. So, as we talk about leadership and care, I don't think that we can ignore the pain that the other communities are feeling right now. This past week, three students at E.E. Smith High School in Fayetteville lost their lives in a tragic car accident. In Southport, North Carolina, a shooting at a local bar claimed several lives earlier in the month, shattering a peaceful evening. And in Tennessee, an explosion at a munitions plant killed 16 people, leaving families and towns reeling. These heartbreaking events remind us of how fragile life is and how deeply important it is to lean on each other before crisis hits. When tragedy strikes, it's not policies or titles that hold a community together, it's the people. It's neighbors checking in, churches opening their doors, teachers and first responders showing up with compassion and strength. Let's continue to build the kind of community here, one that relationships and readiness go hand in hand and where we care for one another, not just in crisis, but every day. Upcoming, I'm not going to hit anymore on the strategic plan, I feel like that has been beat to death tonight. But I'm going to move along to the next and just say, I invite everybody to join us. I'm going to go in mom mode here as a member now, my first time ever, but PTA of Gatesville Elementary School. Pretty excited to be a PTA mom. But we have a trunk retreat at Gatesville Elementary on October 24th from 6:00 to 8:30. We will have a trunk there that the county will be representing. I'll be there, the other commissioners are invited out. We're also going to have the Town of Gatesville joining us, the Board of Education's going to have something out there. We're going to have a nice show of support for the elementary school as they go forward with their event. And then also just want to point out, because I feel like they're advertised and advertised and the turnout just isn't always there, but we have middle and high school games that happen each week in various different sports. The schedules are typically posted online, but I do encourage you, if you have a chance, get out and support these kids. Whether it be rec center, middle school, high school, get out and support these kids because a lot of them are giving their all and it means a lot to look up and see the stands full of people supporting you. And that is going to be all I have except to make the one comment, I hate comparing us to other counties because the statement, if you've been to one county, you've been to one county, is pretty true. Gates County is not like anybody else and we can compare as much as we'd like, but in the end, Gates County is unique and we have to be aware of the unique situation that we have with our beautiful rural community. We are now, I'm going to open it up to the last public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up for that?
Ms. Saunders.
Okay.
Ms. Saunders.
Okay. All right. So, Ms. Saunders, I'm just going to say, this period is a three-minute period and if you could just state your name and voting district for the record.
My name is Ms. Saunders.
Yes, ma'am.
Still North Carolina. Just a few quick points because I've been an educator in some form or fashion for the past 27 years and when I was at the middle school, my students say, you know, you hard that you paid.
And I am one that will address this board. And so, I wanted to stand up to let you all know that tonight, even though this has been a really long meeting, this has been a very productive meeting from this sitting board. And, you know, the talk about the resolution for that one-fourth cent, as an educator, I don't care what age a student is, if they ain't had breakfast, they grow up, they don't know how to act. So, that's a great thing. I hope that passes. The reentry program, I like that idea. I remember when we used to have inmates right down the street from my home, we have a local pastor who went through that program and look at what he has become. And so, that's a great program and I hope we support that. The senior center, I don't know if we still the only county in the state that don't have one, but it makes a difference because as people age, y'all saw me hobble up here, you know, you need to be around people that look like you understand your concerns and you can go and get information. The strategic plan, I love that, by the community because the board is the board and you're the governor and you're to be here at the pleasure of the people. So, why not ask the people? Because this is just like church. Sometimes we overlook people who may not have but one word to say, but that word does have value. So, I like that part about that. Glad we have new faces on boards. I love that, Ron Disha and all those that showed up. That's a beautiful thing because sometimes in the county, people are like, I can't do this or I'm not good enough or whatever. You live here, you pay taxes here, you sleep here, you know, you dial 911, so why not be engaged? And that's what I try to encourage people to do. And then lastly, thank God, the Sheriff's Department's got all the material that they need and the body cams and all that. I'm excited about that because then I ain't got to fuss with the sheriff this year coming up, okay? All right? Because that, that does a lot. It shows what goes on, it holds them accountable and holds other people accountable too. And so, and then when you have those sort of things in place, it makes things go a lot better. So, that's all I have. Tonight was a good night.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Did we have anyone else signed up? All right. And this is the portion of the evening where we'll see if there's anyone that did have something that you could come up. All right, seeing none. We are now going to call for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, when 11 A6 to discuss personnel matters.
So moved.
All right. Do you have a second for that? We're closed session.
One second.
All right, all in favor of closed session? Any opposed? That was unanimous? All right, so we are now closed session.